The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Here.
Jordanine?
Here.
Maldonado Velas?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Presente.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
All right, so there is two items that were laid on the table. Item one, any?
Motion to take up item one off the table.
For a second.
Second.
Motion to take up item one, the committee on charter and rules referred order that the city council ministry of assistant be appointed to a two-year appointment, recommend that be adopted. Under discussion from charter and rules.
So moved.
All right, so I do believe everyone received the signed copy from the mayor. Any questions on it? No? All right, so motion would be to receive, adopt, and approve the charter change. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Did you pull somebody's name out of the bucket?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Counselor Tomlin will be first.
Okay. Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
I'm staying right. Wait, yes, I'm staying, sorry.
That's okay. Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordanine?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Item number two.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to re- remove item two from the table.
Motion to remove item two, seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, committee on ordinance, who refer in order that the city amend the zoning ordinance to allow for front yard pools by special permit, recommended that this was adopted. We did table this after last discussion. Yep. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. So the motion is to receive the committee report and pass the first reading.
Second. Counselor, Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. So the last time this was brought up in our last city council meeting, I had opinions that I had reserved. And in doing so, I reread the order and it makes total sense, so I'm changing my position on this. And I just wanted to make it clear to my colleagues and to the constituents of our city that the reason why I'm changing my, my position is because I feel that it was an error on my part. So anyways, that's it. Thank you.
All right, so Counselor Bacon, motion was to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion. All those in favor?
So. Aye.
All right, motion is to pass the second reading, Counselor Bacon.
Yes, motion to pass second reading.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordanine?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Nine days, five days. Nine days, five days.
Well, it must be nine to four.
Nine, four.
Because there's only 13 of us.
Oh, wait, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Nine, four.
So with your vote, you approve the special permit.
Okay. Item number three?
Uh, public comment?
Public comment, okay.
I do have a list here. Is there anyone online as well, just so we make sure? All right, so first on the list is Deborah Vega. If you come, just for those who may have not spoken here before, state your name, address, and then it's a minute, 30 seconds, around the minute mark. I'll just kind of give you the wave, not trying to interrupt you, just letting you know the timeframe. And then we'll go from there. Is it on? There you go. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Vega and I live at 17 Linden Street in Hoyoke. I am here tonight to speak in favor of using the CPA funds for historic restoration of the O'Connell property now owned by Girls Inc. of the Valley. In full disclosure, I am a longtime board member of Girls Inc., so I could go on and on about their wonderful programs and how they uplift our city. But today I'm going to talk about historic preservation. You see, I live in one of the historic row houses that aligns that first block of Linden Street and abuts the O'Connell property. So I have a vested interest in wanting to maintain the historic integrity of that entire neighborhood. And that's not just for me to enjoy from my own backyard. It's for the hundreds of people that drive by that corner every day, very busy corner. And also for the generations of girls that will be using that building for our programs. So as a taxpayer, I think that if I asked other taxpayers if they would support these funds to be used especially for this historic building, I think they would say yes. But I can only speak for myself, so this Hoyoke taxpayer says yes. Yes to historic preservation and yes to Girls Inc. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is hopefully on San Jose, Ivana Sattler? Salter? Salters?
Hi, it's Aviana Lee Salters.
I apologize.
With that being said, I'm Aviana Lee Salters. I use she, they pronouns. I live on 77 Lyman Street here in Hoyoke. And I've been a member of Girls Inc. of the Valley since 2017. I'm a rising senior next year. I wouldn't be anywhere prepared for college in the Hoyoke education system, by the way, if it wasn't for Girls Inc. and all the participation that I do in Girls Inc. I've had internships with state representatives, with the state senator, and those are all being led through Girls Inc. And this money for the new building would be awesome. And Hoyoke taxpayers agree.
Thank you. Next is Crystal.
Hello, I'm Crystal Lee Briggs Salters. I live at 77 Lyman Street. And I am a, a mother of a Girls Inc. member. And as a Hoyoke taxpayer and a Girls Inc. mother, I am totally in support of these funds going to the O'Connell building and Girls Inc. of the Valley. Both of my daughters, one who is now in second grade and my daughter who just spoke in 11th grade, has greatly benefited from the programs there, and I know many other girls have also. And to deprive them of this opportunity to be put into this new building would be at a detriment to all generations of girls in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Serrano of Beacon Ave? Am I saying it?
My, my name is Jasleen Serrano and I'm from 17 Beacon Avenue. And I use she, they pronouns and I attend Girls Inc. at the teen center and go to STEM Academy. I am in the seventh grade and, and am looking forward to my first year in Eureka. I love attending Girls Inc. because they accept me for who I am. I have fun with my facilitators and my friends. Girls Inc. is my happy place because I can express myself. I can als- I cannot wait for a bigger building and to be and to be to be with Girls Inc. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shannon?
Hi there, I'm Shannon Bliven. I am the chair of the Hoyoke Bike Pod Committee, also the marketing and community outreach person for Valley Bike Share. Just real quick, this is another resident who is in support of Girls Inc. getting repairs. 35 Martin Street here in Hoyoke. I just wanted to come up and introduce myself and want to be here to be able to support any orders that are a reduction of speed on our streets. We've had more than one traffic fatality to pedestrians this year. And I think it's really important that we start cracking down on the speed limits and making it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff, Jeff Trask.
Thank you so much, President McGee. I just wanted to address the, the counselors here tonight, just on an order that will be presented later on in the meeting. It's being filed by Counselor Bacon. And the order has to do with the, I guess, taking a look at the job description and the job of emergency management director here for the city of Hoyoke. Just want to let the council know that the, the reason for this look at the job description for emergency managers, that we're looking to professionalize it and codify the duties and responsibilities of that particular position. So the position started off where it was a part-time position. Then it became the, the burden of the fire chief for a number of years. Didn't make much sense because the fire chief has his own responsibilities during a citywide emergency. So I was actually appointed to emergency manager back in 2020, right at the start of the pandemic. And now that the pandemic's winding down, we just want to make sure that this job description accurately reflects the duties and responsibilities of that position. So that should I cease doing this position? I just want to make sure that anybody who follows suit has a general idea and a good idea of what those responsibilities are to the city of Hoyoke. So just wanted to, to brief the council on that and appreciate your support of that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online? John Rivera, online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, John Rivera, 125 Cabot Street in Hoyoke. I am also in support of utilizing CPA funds for the restoration of the building. And I am also here to talk on the behalf of number 58, number 59, and especially number 61. These are all great motions/orders by our city councilor at large. Specifically, number 61, a resolution in support of a fair share amendment. It's time to appropriate the taxes that the very wealthy need to pay. This would, this would support our city in so many ways. And I hope that you all will work to see that this happens, not only in Hoyoke, but alongside other municipalities nearby to us. And that's all. Have a good night, y'all.
Thank you. Just one point to everyone, we're having a little difficulty for online with the interpreters when going back and forth. So if something's missed, they always will come back and do the interpretation after the full meeting's done. So just in case there's questions on it that you receive. With that, there's no one else online or in person. So on to item three, which is a letter from the mayor reappointing Jeff Trask to serve as the emergency management director, which will be a one-year term and will expire May 2023.
Make a motion to be approved and then, and the nomination confirmed for his reappointment?
Motion is to receive and confirm the nomination. Under discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Four is from Alicia Zoller regarding the CDBG.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five is from DPW Commissioner Patricia Devine, letter, ordinance language for director. Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Six is from the order regarding the general fund and sewer expense.
Motion received and send a copy to finance.
Motion received, sent to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Seven is a communication regarding Main Street, Springdale Corridor, executive session. So that'd be receive and then we'll set up for an executive session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same with number nine, Todd? So no executive session, that's a typo. Should be executive summary. So you should have a copy of it. Did everyone receive this copy? Look familiar? If you have, then that's really all it's referring to. So motion is to be received.
Like that.
What?
I didn't get a shiny booklet.
Do you want, want this one?
Good.
Let's just receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight is?
Actually, Todd, let me suspend the rules, take eight through 17.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there's a problem with receiving, suspend the rules and then we can receive all of these, I believe.
Okay, so eight is from Mass Realtors, Understanding Housing Choices and Opportunities. Nine is communication regarding Main Street feasibility study. 10 is parking rec minutes from January 13. 11 is Board of Public Works, February 7th, 23rd, and March 7th, their minutes of the meetings. Fire Commission is number 12, that's for February 28th minutes of the meetings. 13 is the Board of Health minutes of the meeting for October 4th, December 2nd, and January 3rd. And Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority is 14. 15 is from the clerk, administrative assistant. 16 is from the legal department, legal fees and calendar year 21 and 22. And then from the director of the senior center, which is the senior tax workoff program. All those are to receive.
Mr. President? Yep.
Okay. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I think they're all great. I just want to give a brief word of thanks to Commissioner Devine for getting us those regular minutes from the public works department. And thank her for her good work on the Board of Public Works. And then I, I want to give credit to Brenna and to Jeff for their good work with the meeting minutes for, for our, our meetings, because I just think they're getting better and better and more accurate. And it's, it's a big help for, for me when, when I go back and review the meetings. So, thank you.
All right, so eight through 17 was to receive as a package. I forgot to do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now as a package, send them off as received, but for eight, a copy to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, can we take up, since they're all renewals, 18 through, suspend the rules, take 18 through 23, and if they paid all their taxes, I take it they're all good to go, so.
Let me just check real quick.
And you need a roll call for the whole thing.
Current. All right, so motion is take up 18 to 23 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
They all are current on taxes, so the motion would be received, grant the renewals with the conditions that were already there. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for renewal of all of these as a package.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordanine?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, approve those. 24 is for a special permit at 938 Main Street.
Mr. President, we refer that to DGR. That's now its purview and the, the chair can set that up for a public hearing.
I just have a question as the chair.
Sure.
Can someone clarify, maybe perhaps Counselor Bartley? This shouldn't go to planning board, or is it going to also go to planning board?
Mr. President?
Yep.
It's just to the chair. Yeah, right, so this is the process. So it will absolutely go to planning board for a recommendation. And it's appropriate, I'm just again to the chair. So the planning board will send a recommendation to, a communication to this body. Hopefully, they'll go through regular order, and then we'll refer that to DGR. And then at that point, you and Jeff will work to set up a public hearing that will be paid for by the petitioner.
Okay.
Not paid by the city of Hoyoke. But Jeff knows how to handle all that. He knows how to appropriately advertise it. So you might want to think about having a meeting middle of May, back end of May, to, to let the planning board do its thing.
Okay.
Get back to us with, so that you have appropriate time to advertise.
Okay.
But absolutely, this has to, planning board, I'm just, if I may?
Yep.
Planning board recommends, that's their role. They don't call the shots. I mean, we, we do it with the mayor, of course. So, but you, but you need to have their two cents, if you will, before you, before you do anything. Because they'll, they'll do the heavy lifting and then we can interview Mr. Moore and, and.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 25 is a petition for zone change of 18 Cabot from AH to BC to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
President's report, real quickly, I did reach out to the chief of police regarding the badges that the order was filed by Counselor Jordanine and some others. That's in the works. And they have the names, so they're being worked on, so that'll be done. And I'll get those to you once they're in. We did attend an event at Woodstone, opening up on Hampton Street. Restaurant opening up. Counselor Tomlin was there, Counselor Bartley, Counselor Rivera. The mayor was there for ribbon cutting. It was a very nice event and we wish the owners good luck on that. I think it's awesome to see things opening back up and it's just a very beautiful spot. Finally, you should have received the notice today, emailed that the chamber event for tomorrow is postponed and moved to sometime in June. We'll get you the updated date as it comes in, but tomorrow is postponed at the volleyball hall of fame. With that, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, just, I don't know if you mentioned her name. Counselor Givner was also there. It's her, her word.
I was, I was trying to remember everyone. I had to run in and out. I had to run to a birthday party. Not mine, though. I give up on those. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to ordinance, committee, reports of committees, ordinance. 26A, the committee on ordinance was referred. Hold on one second. Sorry, just wanted to get an update to you. We can do A. It's B, C, and D that we cannot take up tonight because we don't have the legal form. And per suit, not signed, so we have to be tabled. So with that, 26A, the committee on ordinance was referred. An order, petition of a hybrid house LLC marijuana manufacturing establishment at 55 Jackson Street. Recommend that the order be adopted with the following conditions. That the owner of the building always pay commercial property tax rates to the extent allowed by federal, state, and local law for the duration of special permit. That the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyoke residents for non-security jobs. That the hiring preference be given to security personnel who are retired Hoyoke police officers or retired members of another police department that are now, lives in Hoyoke. There should be no marijuana consumption on site. That the hours of operation be set according to the city ordinances. The applicant must abide by the Massachusetts general law and guidance for cannabis control commission. And that petitioner application shall conform with the city and state health laws, rules and regulations according to order, control, and duration for the permit. So Counselor Bacon?
So, thank you. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
So motion to receive, adopt, pass the committee report, pass the first reading. Under discussion. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So this application came through, it was reviewed by planning, and the applicant responded to the remaining open questions from planning. And the committee is recommending it unanimously with the standard now seven conditions. And number seven, I would just like to point out, includes the odor nuisance controls for the duration of the permit as well. Thank you.
Counselor Marshall Rembelletti?
Hi, everyone. So I meant to mention this to you earlier, Todd. And for, I actually spoke with the state ethics commission and I've been advised to abstain from voting on any special permits related to cannabis because of my employment, not at a cannabis facility, but some of our, some cannabis folks do ask to put my job E for all at, into their social impact plan. So just going forward, I wanted to just let folks know that, I don't know what the process is. I don't know if I was supposed to reach out to you earlier, but now we know, right?
You know, that's the problem. You were supposed to. It's, it's a penalty. No, I'm just kidding.
Todd, I'm very gullible. I'm like sweating now. Okay.
No, no, thank you for letting us know. Anytime a conflict comes up, just state it for the record. You can always leave the room if you don't want to be in the discussion, if there's a debate about it. If there's a vote, just abstain. So you're welcome. Anyone further on this one? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, ma'am, Mr. President, I just want to make a, first of all, just to the chair to test, you know, you did the right thing. So, yeah, theoretically, you probably should leave the room, but, you know, this is, we all know each other, so relax. So just a small point, Mr. President, we've had at least one news article, a pretty, a, quite a task. We got taken the task by the chair of the planning board on a recent letter about our ordinances related to marijuana. And I'm going to respond to the chair of the planning board and to anybody else who cares. This city council, this city, has been more than welcoming to the marijuana industry than any other municipality in the Commonwealth, by far. And when I see letters to us calling us to task for the most miniscule errors that maybe, maybe affect, maybe it was an innocent error in an ordinance, and, and calling us out and saying we're not welcoming and we're, we're damaging the reputation of the city and the industry. I want the president to know, and I want the planning board to know, that I take your language and I, I find it offensive. So this is my only way to speak back to them and to anybody else who wants to call this body out. I mean, think carefully about your words when you write letters to the city council, because I read them and their public record. But those of us who were here in 2015, 2016, when we were putting together these ordinances, countless hours at that table, and counselors that have gone, you know, passed through this body, who, you know, whose names I remember very well and they did a great job. They put a lot of time and effort into it. And then we make it, we, you know, I, I wish we were perfect, like the planning board. I really, I wish I was. I wish I was perfect, like certain, certain newspapers, but I'm not. But I know we, I tried my best and we all tried our best and we took our votes. And maybe there was a little mistake by some, some department. But come on, guys, you know, give us, not that you would not, it's, it's easy to, easy to slap us down, but once in a while, give us a little bit of credit. For how many, how many, how many manufacturers, how many, how many growers do we have in this municipality? We blow away Springfield, Hamp, Westside, all of them. Westside doesn't even have it. So, well, you know, once in a while, give us a little bit of credit. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, so the motion was passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. Well, this is, because I'm reading it, this is a special permit, so we don't have to ordain it.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's why I was, I was reading while you were saying it. So, that's fine, I'm catching up too. So the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, not to ordain it, but you're just voting to spash. to pass the special.
Approve it.
With conditions.
Motion to approve.
So, clerk will call the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Valesp?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one abstain.
What your vote approved that?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do you need a motion from me to table 26B, C, and D?
Yeah, I was just gonna get to that and let everyone know that, seeing how it's not in proper form yet, the motion would be to table B, C, and D, so we can have it for the next meeting once everything's signed.
All right, sorry to interrupt.
No, no worries. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Off to Finance, 27A, the Committee on Finance is referred. An order that the CPA recommendations for fiscal year '22 CPA project recommendations order be adopted with approval from Miracle League of Western Mass in denial for Girls Inc. So, motion is to receive and approve, Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, if I could, the Chair of Finance was very tardy at the Finance Committee meeting, we had a merry-go-round annual meeting, and a lot of business going on, and the horses were a little bit rambunctious last week. Our Vice Chair, Kevin Jordan, Counselor Kevin Jordan filled in, and if I could impose upon Kevin, just to brief the City Council on the recommendations of the Committee. I made about the last third of the meeting itself.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, Mr. President, so with respect to 27A, the CPA Committee Chair came before the Finance Committee, made a presentation for two proposals for funding for CPA. One was for $350,000 for the Miracle League. That was to do a number of park renovations at Kennedy Field for a project called Playground for All. This was in the category of recreational space. Essentially, they're gonna build a playground for children of all abilities in the City of Hoyoke on this city-owned property. This accessible and adaptive playground will make it easier for children with physical and cognitive disabilities to play safely with their typically developing peers and siblings. So, this was something really unique, and it's really a joy to have in the city, and it was great that, you know, that we were able to have these type of funds in order to do this. And these will be important improvements to one of our public parks. The other proposal was from Girls Inc., which we heard about a little earlier, that was, oh, by the way, it was unanimously supported, the Miracle League, 350,000. The Girls Inc. proposal was voted down on a two-to-one motion. This proposal was to do in the category of historic preservation. It was requested that they would like to do a number of preservation work for the new building that they purchased at 480 Hamden Street. We, many know that to be, that was formerly the O'Connell's offices, then it was a law office, and now they have recently purchased it. Their proposal requested to do masonry work, repointing work, cleaning of the facade, as well as slate roof restoration. The majority of the Committee had a number of reasons that it was opposed to it. I'm happy to kind of go into those, that we had the issue with Girls Inc., a number of things. So I'll just kind of tick off on the list of what was the issue. The first one was that this, unlike the Miracle League project, these were improvements to a public property, to a city park at Kennedy Field. So this, when CPA was adopted, these, the spirit of it was to do public projects that we didn't have enough public resources for. And it wasn't to be given to private organizations, that was not the intention of the CPA. And let's all remember that when the voters approved the CPA tax increase in 2016, they, this is an add-on to their real estate taxes, unlike CDBG money, which by the way, in my 20-something-plus years here, I've voted many thousands of dollars for Girls Inc. to receive on CDBG funding. But with respect to the CPA funding, this is supposed to be doing work on public projects. Girls Inc. is not a public project, it's a privately-owned building. And one of the concerns of the majority of the Finance Committee was, one, they recently purchased this building and took it off the tax rolls. We used to receive $35,000 a year in property taxes on that building, which we no longer receive. That's a gift to Girls Inc. every year. And, of course, it does sort of beg the question, now, we still have our bills, and I don't know who we're gonna lay off in order to fund the 35,000, we're not gonna collect anymore. But nevertheless, that is, over a course of four years, would be the 100 and approximately 50,000 that they're requesting. So that was a big issue and concern. There were some others. One is that there was concern about establishing a precedent. If we start opening up the, to private organizations, the CPA funding, that we're gonna have, many others will be coming and saying, well, we're just like Girls Inc., we're a wonderful organization, and we deserve help too. Well, and Girls Inc. is a wonderful organization, which we've been very generous to over many, many years, as I said, back to the CDBG grant funding. But we're also charged with making sure we have sufficient resources for all the historic preservation that's needed in public buildings, i.e. the one we're all sitting in right now. I assure you very much, this City Hall needs a great deal more than $150,000 worth of improvements. Where's that money coming from? Because if we give it to you at Girls Inc., we don't have it for the public building here. How about the City Hall annex? Has anybody walked through there? You could not even get off the first floor of that building, and I would easily find you $150,000 worth of repairs. How about Wisteriahurst? Take a ride over Pine Street. We got two walls that are collapsing, it looks like a missile hit them. There is all kinds of repairs that need to be done over there, they could easily consume 150,000. How about Scott's Tower? That is also a public project, which needs a great deal more money than the money that has thus far been allocated for it. So the point is that when the voters approved this, it was under the deal that these were to fund public projects, not give these resources to private organizations, no matter how noble they are. And, and so, the majority of the Finance Committee felt that we want to keep that. I believe that's in the same spirit that we recently saw that the Hoyoke Taxpayers Association came out against funding this Girls Inc. project, not because anybody doesn't think this Girls Inc. roof repair is not a wonderful thing, but just that we have so much public work that that's the reason the taxpayers gave us this money, to fund our much-needed public projects. So, in that spirit, there was also some other, we didn't get into too much, some other issues did arise post the meeting. Is this technically maintenance on a building? Someone did point that out to me. That would be specifically prohibited under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, that cleaning, masonry work, repointing, fixing slate roof, is that maintenance on a building? If it is, you're not supposed to do that. That, there is a state law on that. So, but the bigger issue is that these, and this was small portion of the overall money into that project. There was, I believe they're on the order of trying to raise $5 million, so this would represent about 3% of the overall project. I think that covers the big points of the concerns of the Finance Committee, mostly the fact that it would be establishing a bad precedent, we want to keep the money to fully fund public projects so much, I mean, we literally could be in the millions of public project monies that we need to do. And we think that with the new recent $35,000 free taxes for life per year, that that already is being very generous. So that was the motion in favor of the Finance Committee report, thank you.
Counselor Rivera first.
Thank you for that, Counselor Jordan. There are some points that I kind of want to point out. I actually am on the Steering Committee for the State for CPA, so I reached out to Stuart Saginaw, who's the Chairman of the CPA for the state level, to kind of like clarify the integrity and the spirit of the CPA, and what is the purpose. According to him, he states that, to find out what is the public benefit that will be added from the project, right? Girls Inc. is a public benefit. I guess I could say my wife attended the program, my mother-in-law worked at the program when I was a child. I also watched Girls Inc. grow through when they shared the space at the Boys and Girls Club for many years. So it's a, it's a kudos to you guys for actually getting your own space finally, because I've seen it for years, you guys struggling, trying to get your own space, right? But, like, to keep to the integrity of CPA is, right, whether it's the Girls Inc., whether it's the Boys and Girls Club, whether it's a private, public institution, the building is what you're fixing. The building is a historical benefit. They apply for a historical preservation. So when you're going through the process of the building, if they leave, the building still stays. The money that we're investing is into the building, not into the organization, it's into the building, the same as this building. City Hall people, or whoever is working at City Hall should be applying for CPA. I've been asking for the last three or four years why they haven't, but they didn't this time. And neither did City Hall annex. None of these people, or none of these organizations or departments applied, they should have applied, and they didn't. Ultimately, where it comes down to it, right now, the Hoyoke Taxpayers Association sends an email to all of us, trying to kind of like influence and bully us, to make us feel like we have to make certain decisions based on the fact that they're the Hoyoke Taxpayers Association, yet they're not here right now at the moment. To me, this is a project that is gonna add public benefit in the long run, and in the short stay, right? Right now, there are a variety of young ladies, or people in this space right now, right, that are here because they want to organize for their space. I am happy that this played out this way, because they had the opportunity to be civically engaged in their city. This is something you barely see. So I kind of, I kind of thank God for this space right now, right? Because we got a huge group of youth in this space, which we barely ever have, sitting here, ready to advocate for their space. But ultimately, my last point to make is, the building gets fixed, the building stays. And in the future, there is a plan, or there possibly could be a plan, for people to apply privately, like in Springfield, to help fix their houses in historical districts. So that's part of the process, that is part of CPA, that is, that is part of the spirit of CPA, because not everyone can afford to fix their homes to the, to the letter of what a historical preservation is. So that's, that was part of the process of CPA. That's what I learned from Stuart Saginaw. You can send him an email to try to get more information from him if you'd like. But that's my piece, that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that an organization like Girls Inc. has a public benefit, so I'm, you know, basically repeating that statement. And I would argue, I don't know exactly how many young ladies come out of Girls Inc., but I would argue that the benefit to the city is more than $35,000 per year. That's maybe a salary, and it's, you know, churning out young leaders, young female leaders who are going on to colleges, they're doing research at UMass, they're getting really great opportunities, and they're moving our city forward. So, as we all know, I truly believe that if we don't invest in our children, you know, we won't have a future in the city. So, by keeping our young ladies occupied with stimulating environments, things to do, studies, we do our city a great benefit. So I'm happy to hear that their project is in the spirit of CPA, because that's very helpful to know. And also, relationships go two ways, right? So, if we want our young leaders to stay in Hoyoke, by supporting them now, we'll be supporting ourselves in the future. I think it's important that we also keep talent here. It's easy to run away, I know this, because I've done it a lot, but it's nice to come back. So, you know, as these young ladies go out and venture out into the world, hopefully they remember where they started, and they come back and they bless us with their presence. And as far as public buildings, it's a public benefit, also because it's my understanding that Girls Inc. is a free program to all the young ladies who take part, they don't pay a penny, so they get all those benefits, and that's a huge service to the young women of our city. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Counselor Mercy Rembley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everyone that showed up this evening, it's great to see you all. I just want to point out that if we did vote to fund this, it would not be the first time that we voted to fund a nonprofit organization for something that is not necessarily a public project. If you look on the CPA website, we have given funds to Valley Opportunity Council to fund the rehabilitation of a couple properties that they own, that are being turned into housing. We've also funded properties on Jackson Street. We have funded the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club to fix their playground on their own property, not on city property. So I don't believe that voting in favor of Girls Inc. this evening is setting a precedent. I think that precedent has already been set. And I believe what others have said, that this is a public benefit. Girls Inc. of the Valley could have gone anywhere in the Valley, and they stayed here. And they are taking the efforts to rehab a building that should be maintained and continued. And so, you know, with that, I mean, I'm not gonna reiterate what other folks say, I just want to remind folks, we've also funded the merry-go-round. And, you know, that's, there's, these all have wonderful public benefits. And so, that's just one, I wanted to remind folks of that. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Oh, thanks. I just have a, I just threw through to the Vice Chair of Finance, I thought I heard Kevin you say that this may be contrary to 44B, and I don't, I mean, I'm familiar with 44B, but not to that extent that you raised. So I guess my question to the Vice Chair would be, do we need to have the Lot Department weigh in? And if so, does, can the Lot Department weigh in tonight? Or is that too broad of a question where we would need to table this? Because I don't want to vote on something where, if we're gonna find out down the road it was contrary to Massachusetts General Law. So, I would hope, I would hope we could get some clarification on that.
Legal's, legal's on the line from what I see. You can always suspend the rules to ask them, and if they need more time, they can answer it that way.
I will, so moved.
All right, so the motion is suspend the rules to allow legal to speak, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mike, are you there? I see ya. Good evening. You're on mute.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, did you hear the question from Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, it was more so the question from Counselor Jordan.
I did.
You, okay.
Okay. But thank you.
And you?
I'm not familiar with that section, so we would need some time to look at it in relation to the CPA, giving grants out to nonprofits.
Well, for construction, I thought, Kevin, you want to expand on that?
Maintenance, there's a, the issue Attorney Bissonette would be, is the proposal, does it or some part of it constitute maintenance of the building? And if that's true, then that would be one of the prohibited acts under the CPA statute, for your review.
Okay.
So.
Happy to take a look at that, Counselor.
Yep. I mean, I, just, may I, Mr. President?
Yep.
Just before I go, I just want, I actually, I want to compliment the prior speakers, because they were all very good, made some great points. And if I don't give a compliment to the young ladies who spoke, and their tremendous poise, I'd be remiss in doing that. So, so thank you to all the prior speakers, that's not very easy to do, and I thought you were all fabulous. And I like your t-shirts. And, and so, that being said, Mr. President, I would be of the opinion that we ought to table this here, until, and just leave it for the next meeting. I mean, unless there's a.
Before you get to.
I don't want to make the motion with somebody else.
I know there's.
Yep.
One other person that raised her hand to speak, so, now it's, Counselor Bacon, now there's two. So, I mean, you can always make the motion, but just as we all. So, I mean, you can always make the motion, but just as we all know the rules, if he makes a motion to table it seconded, debate ends.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll wait.
Two other people in the queue that are waiting. I'm just letting-
No, we always wait, yeah, of course.
Alright, so with that, Counsel Vacan, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to mention that I had filed a late file order seeking a legal opinion relative to the question from Girls Inc. And I certainly credit their advocacy for their organization and, and the good work that the organization does. But I just thought we should be careful to be sure that we are staying within the guidelines of the tax. So, just for your information, I'm not sure which late file it ended up being.
We have it B, late file B.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and take up late file B if-
Motion to suspend rules, take up late file B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This is from Counsel Vacan, ordered that the city solicitor provide a legal opinion with regard to the use of the CPA funds for the roof project, uh, owned by a private corporation. Is that allowed by the CPA tax dollars? Next is Counsel Puelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I wanna thank Counsel Jordane. I thought he, you know, I voted against it. I thought his summary was pretty accurate. I wanna thank the speakers that said that we should vote for it. You know, they made really good points. And just like Counsel Bartley, I, I agree that the young ladies behind me did a, did a great job tonight. Um, I, you know, for me, the main issue was the historical aspect of the building. I mean, I've never heard of the O'Connell family. I grew up in only, I've never heard of him. He, he jumps up out of his chair. I've never heard of him. No clue. No idea. Uh, I come to find out they built, they built Hoyoke, you know, they did all these great things. That's cool. You know, I'm thinking before it was a law office, now it's a construction office. I'm like, okay, cool. Like, you know, it's not the merry-go-round, right? Um, but I, I don't know. So I, I guess I wanna thank, uh, Susan and, and Yadi too. They invited me down to the building. They gave me a great tour. Uh, they talked to me a little bit more about the O'Connell family. Uh, I wanna thank Dave again cuz he recommended that I reach out to the Chair of the Historical Committee, uh, Paula Farrar, and she gave me a great history lesson of the O'Connell family. Um, so I, I don't know. It's a, it's a lot of information to think about, um, for sure. I think, um, you know, I, I guess I would be leaning towards here in a legal opinion, just to make sure that everything would be okay. I think that's pretty astute, uh, Counsel Bartley's part. Um, so, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Counsel McGivern.
Here comes a history lesson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I'll be brief. Um, I, I believe community preservation is about community and, and the historic component of community preservation is about saving any historic or, you know, preservation of any historic building within the city. And I think the CPA did a good job vetting this one. Uh, the, the O'Connell Building itself is, is kinda tied to a tremendous amount of history, not only in Hoyoke, but throughout New England. And, uh, it was the, the main corporate headquarters for the O'Connell's and Sons, which became a developer that, you know, stretches from here up, up through Maine and down through New York. Um, but I do agree that there are some points that need to be vetted by the law department. Uh, points that, you know, we should all be aware of and, and it, it never hurts to be a little bit safe and to take a, to take a, uh, to take a moment and, uh, allow our law department to weigh in. I just would ask that we separate the vote this evening and that we vote on the Miracle League, uh, wonderful organization. The committee, uh, did the right job in rec- in recognizing that their, uh, the money's going towards the Miracle League is, uh, something that is well-deserved. Uh, not, not only our local chapter of the Miracle League, but the, the national chapter. It's just an incredible organization itself. And I think that playground would be great.
Counsel Rivera.
Um, with regards to the maintenance piece, um, I guess maybe I have a misunderstanding. Is it because they're a nonprofit organization and it's not a city-owned piece? Because, uh, we've done lots of work for, for a lot of different projects like, uh, West Eriahurst with regards to giving the money just to paint the side of the house and to do rooftop. Nine thousand dollars for roof repair. Um, that would be considered maintenance too. We've already awarded them these dollars. So like, I'm not, I'm not understanding where we're getting at now. All of a sudden, we're convoluting the idea and trying to throw all these things in the mix. Um, if it's up to me, I'll make, I'll make a motion to pass them both today, right now.
Mr. President. Counsel Jordae.
Yeah, um, the issue relative to maintenance wouldn't have anything to do with them being a private organization versus a public or that, that rule applies to any project. You're, says right in it, you're not supposed to do maintenance projects with the, with the money. So if, you know, there's, yeah, well, there's people that rob banks every day. If they don't get caught, is bank robbery legal? I don't know. Um, I don't think so.
There we go.
I mean,
I, I-
I mean, if the, the, I mean, the point, I, I don't understand. It's like, well, we've always, if we didn't follow the rules in the past, we shouldn't keep not following the rules. I, I, I don't understand the logic of that argument.
For whatever you want. You can't make the rules for whatever you want. You can't just bend whatever, bro, every time.
Counsel has the floor.
That's fine.
Others were speaking, he did not interrupt, so let's go. Come on now.
Okay, so again, I'll come back to, um, I don't, you know, what happened in the past? I don't know. I can only tell you that I happened to review this. I, I wasn't here for the last four years. So what was been going on before I got here, who knows? This is relatively new. This CPA law was adopted on my way out the door. We, we established the ordinance uh, in favor of this, uh, as a matter of fact, over the mayor's veto. In one of the final acts that I had as council president, we actually set up the whole CPA board. So I, I was not on the council while it was being, you know, actually effectively enforced. Um, I would say, um, there was a good point made by one of the other counselors relative to some other projects. And that was, um, talking about public housing. Obviously, we don't do affordable or public housing um, here at the, at the City of Hoyoke government, other than perhaps maybe the Housing Authority. I think, um, that might be given some additional, um, consideration and leeway. I, I don't think the people's vision was that City of Hoyoke would start buying apartment blocks and that we would start running, um, public housing, or we would start buying homes and, and selling them and we would get into the real estate business. But what they, what, I remember, you know, this did not pass exactly overwhelmingly in twenty sixteen when the public voted for this. It was like fifty-five, forty-five. And I listened very carefully to the, the conversations and it's not a huge amount of money. I think I pay a hundred and thirteen dollars a year or whatever to this, this additional tax. And, um, I believe the argument at the time was, again, this was supposed to go to public projects that we didn't have enough money for. And I, I am open to other projects, once the taxpayers have all these projects taken care of. Um, you know, again, I think we've been very generous to this particular, um, uh, group, uh, which is a wonderful group. That's not in dispute here. Um, the issue is, well, this hundred and fifty thousand now, if we don't put this towards public projects, where's the money gonna get to fix City Hall, the annex, West Eriahurst, Scott's Tower, all? Where is, like, we have an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over? I, I just don't see it. And is, if we are gonna start doing this, one of the other things that is spoken to also in the statute that the law department will have to examine is, do we need to be putting deed restrictions in on, on, on real estate that we're developing? Is that gonna happen? For example, if we give the money to a private organization and ten years from now, they decide to sell the building, are they gonna give us our hundred and fifty thousand dollars back? If they sell the building at a profit, would we, would we get our money back? You know, those are some of the, do we even have the right to do that? Um, um, so these are some of the questions that if we start getting into, cuz my concern is, this is, if this is noble, then lots of other things will be noble. And, uh, I, I think we need to make sure we're really examining those details. I haven't heard those conversations taking place in this room. And I think that if we're going to do something different, then we should have those conversations. And, uh, we make sure we manage expectations. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy Ramaliti.
Thank you. Ah, so one of the things that really frustrates me about being on the city council is that I feel like every other week, I just get like this contradictory thing that says, you know, if this is what we did in the past, we should do it like this, like when there was a charter change that was suggested and we should just vote for it because the last city council voted for it. But then I also hear at the same time that we, you know, we're a new city council and we should be voting however we vote. And as a new city counselor, it literally is, is, it, I don't know, it makes me feel crazy. Um, but I, I, I just, um, I think what's frustrating me in this moment is that we have a CPA committee. Uh, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and trust them that they are well-aware of what we can and cannot spend money on. We are here, uh, to approve funds, but at the same time, CPA revenue by state law says that you can use this for projects in the areas of affordable housing, historic preservation, uh, uh, open space, recreational land. I, I'm, I understand that folks feel like we need to get this from the law department. I, I'm just gonna say that it's, you know, it's just another level of, of oversight that I feel like the city council, you know, we don't need to have control over everything. And so, uh, that is where I'm gonna leave it and great. Thank you all so much.
Counsel Givner.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Um, I was just gonna mention that the CPA exists for this very reason, so that we don't have to do all that work as well. They're experts on this. They are following state laws, I'm sure. I have a lot of trust in them. I understand their process is pretty in-depth. Um, so, I mean, I, I can't imagine that we all expect to be experts in everything, which is why all these different committees and subcommittees and organizations exist. So, um, the recommendation from the CPA was to actually grant these funds. And I personally will support this and I would be happy to make a motion to vote on it today because the CPA recommended it. Thank you.
Counsel Maldonado Velas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, echoing a lot of what Counsel Givner, Counsel Murphy Ramaliti and Counsel Rivera have said. Um, but, but what Counsel Murphy Ramaliti just said is, it's very real. This, the last three months have been like part of trying to figure out what the quote-unquote "other side" stands for. And I'm beginning to think that it's nothing. It's just destruction. That's really all it is. Um, so with that, I wanna make a motion to approve both these projects, um, the project for Miracle League of Western Mass and for the Girls Inc.
Second. So a motion was to approve both, but before we get to that, there was the order that brought up the late file to receive and send to legal. That was from Counsel Vacan. We took it up out of order. So that would be receive and send to the legal department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now back to the motion, which was seconded to approve both projects. Is there any discussion, Counsel? Uh, uh, Counsel Bartley, then Counsel-
I'll, I'll defer to Counsel, uh-
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't know. I've had the hand up. I didn't know if you saw me. Um,
I did not. Did not.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, my colleagues already touched, and that's why I tend to, um, lower my hand down, but I might as well mention it. You know, we, we've entrusted the CPA, um, members, um, to do the work. You know, so less work for us and we trust that they're doing the right thing for not just the taxpayers, but for the city and the, and, and what the CPA stands for, which is Community Preservation Act. Now I'll go to my second point. The, the, the second point in regarding to maintenance, right? So, what I'm hearing is the CPA is not meant for maintenance. But the slate roofing on that building is part of the preservation that the, that the CPA stands for, right? It's part of the facade. It's part of the building. It's part of the history of that building and that's what we are trying to maintain. Um, I also wanna mention that, you know, the finance committee had five, have five members. This we all know. Two were not there, two, um, uh, declined, uh, the funds and one, myself, decided to approve and go against the other two. I just wanna point out also that I can't sit here and not thank the girls that I can't see and I wish I can see you all. I, I, I am so proud of every single girl that's in, in that room. This is history. You guys are fighting for this. And I, I am one of your people. I am going to help fight for this. And I just wanted to state that for the record and for my colleagues who understand what this mission is about, thank you. Thank you for your advocacy and thank you for everyone who understands this important project. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley, then Counsel McGivern. No, you, you, you're up first.
I'll defer to Counsel McGivern. I, I, I apologize. I know what I'm gonna-
Okay, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the issue that, that I heard that went to the law department is the, brought up by Counsel Jordane is about maintenance. And even Attorney Bissinett could not answer that question. And, and Mike Bissinett has an incredible amount of experience in municipal, municipal and state law. So that's why I, I support, you know, giving a timeout and getting that one question answered. I'm convinced this is community preservation's, uh, territory. I'm convinced they did a good job. Um, you know, Girls Incorporated is wonderful, but this is also, and I, I think one of the board members said it perfectly, this is about a building, an historic building. And then eventually that's what our vote will be on. So I'm asking that we separate the vote. The Miracle League looks like it's unanimous approval this evening, that we vote on that first. And then we decide if we're going to table the, the Girls Inc. for, uh, feedback from the law department or if we're gonna vote on it this evening. So I'll make that in the form of a motion to separate and vote on Miracle League first.
I'll second that.
Second.
So motion is now to separate the two and vote separately. That was seconded. Counsel Bartley was last.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll hold off my, let's just take the vote and-
Alright, so on the-
Thank you.
On the motion by Counsel McGivern to separate that, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do the ayes have it?
I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, can I make a motion to, to approve the, uh, Miracle League now or is that?
So that we separate. So now the motion is to receive and approve the Miracle League recommendation of three fifty? And that's seconded?
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Alright. Uh, I'll just make one point, uh, to the Miracle League and to Carrie Parsons, who reached out to me and gave me the whole layout of this. Just a phenomenal job by that group. And, and it's a small group from what I was told, volunteers, volunteers. And I wish the public, when it is built, or if you can go online, if we can post that, the drawing, the schematics, but an amazing achievement of what a small group of people, volunteers, could do. So thank you for all your work, uh, on this project. With that, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the recommendation of three fifty.
Amen?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramaliti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved the three fifty. Now to this one, Counsel Bartley. You have a motion or?
Yeah, I, I have a motion to, uh, to lay on the table the, uh, the, the matter for, um, the second CPA.
So the request for Girls Inc. headquarters, motion is to lay on the table. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's it, the ayes have it.
Show our hands.
Show our hands has been requested. If you're voting to lay on the table, to lay on the table, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Five.
My hand's up too.
Yep, I counted that.
Is it my hand?
Yep. So that motion fails.
Just under discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm-
Counsel.
You know, consequently, if we, we vote for this, um, if we take a vote tonight without a legal opinion, I think we're going in the dark. I'd just like to say respectfully, Mr. President, uh, cuz I heard this two weeks ago with the planning board and I'm hearing again tonight with CPA committee that we have a board of experts, um, and, but we have a board of volunteers uh, who serve in these positions. They're wonderful people. Uh, but to, to say that they're experts based upon sitting in a meeting, I'm gonna say that's hard pressed. But more importantly, and that's no sign of disrespect, so please don't, uh, you know, insinuate anything. Uh, but more importantly, it's a board without legal representation. I think that's the important point, uh, that, that I, that I like to make. Lastly, it is this board and it's set up in the laws, the ordinance, it's this board, not the CPA when it comes to us, not the planning board. They recommend. That is their sole purpose. It is this board that makes the decisions. You can accept or reject the recommend- You can accept or reject the recommendation. This is not a game of hurdles, putting up blocks, just because you've been here and you might have, yeah, listen, I've lost a lot of votes, Mr. President, but you follow, in my opinion, the procedure. So my hope is that, and why I voted this way, is to table it because a legal matter was raised, consequently referred to the law department for two weeks. This is not a matter, if we vote on this tonight, the building collapses at 480 Hampton Street. That has not been argued. So a two-week or three-week delay, I think, is a reasonable delay for simply getting firm legal footing. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Aiken, then Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think it's obstructive at all to get legal input when we have been doing some practices for a while that haven't been subject to a question. We've had feedback from a number of people on this project, pro and con, and I respect all the people advocating for it, but I also respect the people that have questions about it. And to the earlier point made, it is our job as the elected city councilors to make the decision, and it's also, in my view, our responsibility to discover if we have made perhaps a mistake in the past, to not continue it going forward. So this is not going to harm the project if indeed it is found to be within the bounds and the guidelines of this CPA law. And so I see no harm to be done to wait for the opinion, and I'd like us to reconsider our vote on this matter. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, again, just by way of context, I get, I get, for those that want to just pass this, I already assumed the moment I got sworn into office here that I'm pretty much going to be the minority on almost all votes, if not every vote, because generally I have a completely different philosophy than the tax and spend philosophy of this general pervasively in this room, so I'm totally content with that. So, basically, as we consider this proposal, I think we should also consider the taxpayers. What are we doing to make sure they're protected? One of the things you do is, when you're going to give funds to things and have projects, is you dot your i's and you cross your t's. Seems like to me decisions are made that are just based on, you know, I'm passionate about something, so give everybody money. If, I mean, basically, we don't say no to anything around here, and everything is yes, everything is give, and I could sit here and do that too, and I, you know, everybody would applaud, oh, Kevin said yes, and it's all great, and, no, I don't do that, because I don't think it's a good idea, yes. But on top of that, when people, I have a duty to raise these issues. I read the law. Has everybody in the room read Chapter 44B? I don't know. Maybe you have, maybe you haven't. But if you haven't, you might want to, because you're voting on things that specifically entail and empower that law. So you better read it. And if you haven't read it, don't sit here and say, we don't need no legal opinion on that, you know? That's just, that's obstruction, you know? Well, no. I mean, laws matter, rules matter. People pass laws for a reason, okay? So if you don't know that for sure, that's why we have lawyers that come to these meetings. I happen to be a lawyer. I tend to appreciate legal things. I feel they have legal significance. So I owe a duty to point these things out. You might want to look at that. Maybe it's fine, maybe it's not fine. Better to know than not to know. So anyways, I'll keep doing that from this corner of the room, just pointing out the financial significance of things, that if we give 150 to this, what you're, but you just have to remember when you're casting these votes, you may be saying yes to this, but you're also simultaneously saying no to the other public projects that we have, because it's not an infinite amount of cash, all right? And it's called prioritizing. Everybody can have their own opinion on what those are. We have a laundry list of public projects, and it is a good point, one of the councilors made, that why isn't there a list? I have an order. One of the takeaways from this finance meeting is, why aren't there all these public projects coming forward that should be getting funded, that aren't getting funded? But as far as the legal opinion goes, unless everybody has a perfect answer, then I don't see why you wouldn't examine that first, but, you know, we can just vote, because, you know, I don't want to hold it up, but if it does come out to be a problem, I hope someone at least is going to examine this before the cash is handed over. If you can even legally retract the money after you approve it, I don't know. Is that legal either? I don't know. And so the law department would have to examine that question too. What if it turns out you weren't supposed to give the money? Do you have the legal authority to give it? What is the other question about liability to the city? If we fund this and something happens during this work to a private, we know about public, we're, we, does that fall outside the scope of our municipal liability waivers? Because we fund it, is, are we potentially liable if a roofer falls off? I don't know. Have any of these questions been examined by the CPA board while they're doing the work? I don't know. Those are all just questions that if we're going to start doing it in this way, we better do our homework to examine those questions. If people have already done that, then clue me in, because I would love to have that information. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
So, a lot of the, I mean, all the projects are run through the state coalition, so that's why we were able to do the Westeria Hurst project, the Ray Street project, as well as the Chestnut Street project, and the Canal Street project. You mentioned something earlier about deeds. We do that. It's a 30-year restriction, and if you do, if you decide to sell your property or do something with it before the 30 years is up, you have to pay us back the money. It's a legal binding contract. We do have legal too. Legal comes into our meetings too, whenever we need them to be there. We ask them to be present. I would ask if you would like to switch positions with me as a CPA counselor, because I am on the CPA, and I'm not a volunteer, I get paid for it technically, because I'm the city councilor. I am the city council representation. You guys allowed, well, you guys all choose me, but you allowed me to represent the, our body on the CPA. I voted for this project because it falls under the guidelines of the CPA. I even reached out to the chair of the steering committee of the CPA to make sure, so that way I am not speaking out of line, more or less. So for me, I just feel like there's a lot of grandstanding, a lot of jargon being thrown around just to confuse and convolute things. Like ultimately, I understand that there is some concern from some of the constituents and some of the taxpayers, or just the Tax Association, because that's all I heard from, and that's the only people you always hear from. But ultimately, I would like for them to be more present too as well, right? I would like for them to come here and speak up for themselves and not just have certain councilors speak up for them every time and make it feel like they only represent that body instead of the city overall, because the city is more than just a tax association, just so we all know that, right? I just became a taxpayer two years ago, but before that, I've been living in Holyoke since I was three years old. I guess for me, it feels like if you're not a taxpayer, then you have no value in this city, right? But at the end of the day, that's not how I live, and that's not how I function. Ultimately, my last point is, it was also approved by Mass Historic, the project. So overall, again, we're just going in circles, talking about legal stuff. I mean, they're not experts, we're not experts, right? We're all elected by the people. We're not here because we put a resume and got hired for the job. Ultimately, you could be a lawyer in your own profession, I could be a program manager, anybody can be whatever it is, but we're here to represent the people. It's not, more or less, to try to pick and choose our battles and try to make things flex because we want them to be that way. So like, it's just, for me, it's crazy for us to be able to separate two awesome projects, right? And right in front of the other group, you say, yeah, let's just vote for these guys and these guys, let's make them wait for later on. Like, I don't understand how we could just do that, bro. For me, and it's not about passion, bro. It's not about passion, it's about fairness. It's all about equity and equality for everyone overall. Those are some words that for some people, it kind of goes over their heads, I totally understand that, but for me, this is what I stand for, and this is what I will always fight for overall.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you. I honestly can't really believe we're still talking about this, and this is going to be the last thing I say, but, and I'm not even going to address what felt like a lot of indirect insults met a lot of folks, but what I, what if we made fund disbursement conditional or contingent upon CPA staff's review in coordination with legal? Could we, could we all agree on that this evening?
You can make a motion to that.
Great.
Second.
Second.
All right, so seeing no one else, just quickly, because we mentioned a few things. Counselor Bartley brought up earlier about planning and kind of some stuff that was said there, then we mentioned Tax Payers Association. To me, I'd like to have the council and members of the community, we're not fighting with each other. Stop calling each other out. Got to work together. I will mention one thing to Counselor Bartley, his point. I went up to the grand, the dedication or starting of the new mental health facility, the old geriatric authority, and the one thing all the doctors and everyone said is, working with Counselor Bartley, working with that committee, working with the city council was a privilege. So, yeah, there are going to be times that we may not agree on a project, and someone might say something about a Scrivener's error that we did, I'll keep using that throughout the term, until I'm gone, Scrivener's error. Look, people get emotional, but stop calling out the groups. Hoyok Tax Payers Association, I know several members on there, is a great organization. They do a ton of work. They really do. They're just reaching out with an opinion. No member on that group deserves to be called out. No member here should be called out. We have a group over here that volunteers, got 350 for their project, very honorable, everything. This isn't about Girls Inc. It's about a building. And whether or not you are up on the law or not, committees have done their job, it's been vetted, it's been sent to us. Whether or not we believe the vetting was done properly, vote up and down. I want Girls Inc. to know one thing. This is not about you. Do not walk out of this chamber thinking that any member on this board thought differently about Girls Inc. We fully support Girls Inc., 100%. It's just a technicality, a sense of whether or not we can suspend or give funds to this issue. To me, I believe with regards to 44B, you know, Kevin, I too am an attorney, I'm the worst one, I'm a boring tax attorney, that means I read everything. I do believe this is something that we can provide the funds for, because it's similar in nature to the other projects that we have funded in the past. So for me, I'm more than willing to vote on the project of a building and a roof. Not maintenance, but historical preservation of that roof. So with that, the motion was to approve pending legal. I heard a second. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that I did miss the meeting that night, finance meeting, one of the few finance meetings I've missed in several years here, and actually had a day with my wife. We celebrated our anniversary that night, and that was important, because back in November, on the 16th, I came down here for a meeting, because I had to do the finance reports as a vice chair, and it was my wife's birthday, you know, and I missed that, and I wasn't going to miss our anniversary. It really was important to me. I called Joe and I got to see part of the meeting, part of the end of the meeting, and I heard Izzy, you know, speak. And me being the public service chair, we appoint people, you know, that are actually on the CPA committee, and I think we just made two appointments in the last month. And that's our duty, and we have other departments, people that have represented it, and Izzy's done a great job. And I agree with our council president, it's not, it's not about Girls Inc., it's about the building. It's about historic preservation. And I was in favor of the CPA when we brought this up about five, six years ago, Kevin. I was very much in favor of it, and I know it was a close vote, and I thought that adding maybe $80 to $100 more on people's tax bills would be something people would vote for, for the betterment of our community. And when the CPA brought this forward, this is, this is about a building. It's about historic preservation. You know, this is about historic Holyoke. And I understand that they took over the building and they purchased the building, we lost $35,000 in tax revenue, but there's, there's something about that building, and there's something about that's in that building that is important to me. Living in Holyoke all my life and actually passing that building several times a day, you know, historic preservation. CPA brought this forward, they vetted it out. I don't recall in my last five or six years ever turning down one of the CPA, you know, proposals that have come before us. I want to thank the people that spoke tonight, the girls and all the supporters of Girls Inc. And Girls Inc. is something I think that is very dear to my heart. You know, it's, it's making girls stronger women, it's bringing them into the community, and what can they do with their future and their lives? It gives them a good foundation, and I think that's important. But basically, we're just voting on funding of this that is vetted through the CPA committee. And that's our role. That's what we're elected to do. And I think that's what we should, as I said, I missed that meeting that night from a very important night to a woman that I love very much, and I would have voted for that that night, it would have been two to two. I know Counselor McGivern had another commitment. And I got a couple of phone calls about this project, and I said I had missed the meeting and I, that I would be in support of it. And I am in support of this program. I'm in support of this, this funding of this project, and I want to thank the CPA and the committee and the people that work hard, that volunteer their time to bring this forward to the council, and that's, that's what we do now. We accept it or reject it. And I'm on the, I'm on the hand of accepting this proposal, and I think it's something that is, is going to go through tonight.
Counselor Maldonado-Vilas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. Following Counselor Murphy Rambeletti's order, so as soon as legal gets back to us, does that mean we have to wait until the next two weeks or as soon as that?
Well, she's making a motion, if I heard it correctly, that we vote to approve pending legal. So we approve it, legal looks it up tomorrow and says it's fine. It goes through.
Cool.
Now, that could take two weeks. It is a busy department, short staff, but that's technically what the motion is. Thank you. All right, so motion was to approve pending legal. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for approving the 150 pending legal approval.
Homan?
Yes.
Aiken?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Maldonado-Vilas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Your vote, you approve that. 27...
Mr. President, can I make a motion to suspend the rules to take 27B and 27J as a package?
Second. Suspend the rules, take up 27B and J. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
27B, Community Finance has referred a petition for a vendor license at Hoyok Street, recommended be denied without prejudice. And J, is the Community Finance referred an order for a new second-hand license for 385 Main Street, recommended be denied without prejudice. So motion is receive, adopt, the committee report to deny without prejudice. Counselor McGivern.
Yes, Mr. President. These two items have been sitting in the finance jacket for some time. One item, our administrative assistant was unable to get a hold of the petitioner. The other item, the petitioner does not know what it's about and all the information we had. So what we're suggesting, we cannot give a petition leave to withdraw, is that we deny them, but without prejudice, so if, for whatever reason, they have to come back before us, they'd be allowed to.
All right, so motion is to receive and deny without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
27C, Community Finance hereby accept the provisions of the fiscal year 21 Emergency Management Performance Grant, $20,150, $20,150 in-kind match. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading and discussion. Counselor McGivern or?
To the vice chair, if you could.
Counselor Jordan.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry. This is 27C?
Yep.
Uh, let's see here. Let me, gotta pull that one up.
That's the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Yep.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, I just gotta pull up my notes. One second, please.
So?
This was for, if I recall, um, for Mr. Trask, um, had come in and, uh, trying to remember. I do not have my notes apparently on this particular item.
I can phone a friend.
I may. Mr. Trask is here.
I can phone a friend.
Yeah, Jeff, oh, Jeff, oh, good. We have Jeff. We can suspend the rules. We can have Jeff come back up to refresh my memory.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow Jeff to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For up to a minute.
Okay, I'll be brief. Um, this is just a, a formula grant that we get every year, uh, based on our population, and the funding is a match, uh, to a, to an equal investment of city, city finances as part of the emergency management budget. Uh, this equip, this, this particular grant is going to be used to purchase, um, equipment that can benefit multiple departments in the city. Specifically, um, this year, we're gonna be buying a portable traffic light.
That's right.
Set up. So that way, you know, if we lose an intersection because somebody crashed into a telephone pole, or we need to create an intersection because we're conducting an evacuation or something else, we have that resource available. So that's, that's what we're planning on using this grant for. So appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. So motion we, to pass?
Yep.
No, no match?
There's no match.
It's an in-kind, well, it's an in-kind.
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 Okay.
So, no, okay. So motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
She's not here.
Okay, Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Is there a vote? Madam Clerk?
I believe it was unanimous of those.
Yeah.
I said twelve yeas, maybe I'm hitting you too fast. Sorry.
For your vote, you approve that one. 27D, Community Finance who is referred. We accept the safe, uh, senior safe, uh, 3,250, total 9,530, no-match grant. So you have one for fire education and senior safety. Recommend it be adopted. So motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel Jordane.
Yes, under discussion. Um, this is a wonderful program. Unfortunately, uh, firefighter Pelcher could not be with us that evening, but the fire chief did come and speak to us. This is to do, uh, safe fire education in the schools as well as for our seniors, and, uh, that's what this funding is for. And, uh, there is no match required under this funding. So, uh, this is something that's been a tremendous program and strongly encourage you to vote in favor of it.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with the vice chair. Maria does come before us. This is an annual grant. Maria does come before us every year with incredible detail as to the work she does. Uh, it's, you know, in the schools, a lot of it is with Sparky, but it's more about the educational materials that are passed out and the message that is sent to our, to our youth. And with the seniors, it's, it's the same thing. You know, in the case of emergency, what do you do? And she, she is just incredible what, uh, what she does with so little, and, uh, this grant each year helps her perform her duties.
So motion is to pass the first rea-, uh, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I just wanna state, I, I agree, totally agree. I actually happened to go to the senior center last week for a coffee, and, um, Maria Pelcher was there giving the safety talk to the seniors, to about 100 seniors there. Um, talked to everything about fire safety, fire detectors, passed out a sheet about where they can actually get contact her to get fired, uh, smoke detectors, cause a lot of people, um, you know, uh, they wear out, they're, they're too old, they last 10 years, um, about putting out fires, escape routes. Um, I learned a couple things, talking about frayed cords that people plug in sometimes, and that causes a fire within the, uh, in the outlets. So, um, this is a, a very important grant that she uses, uh, very wisely.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
For your vote, you approve that one. 27E, Community Finance.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President, take 27E, 27G as a package?
Second.
Moving along.
27E and G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
E is $4,440 from veteran benefits to professional services. G is 3,000 veteran benefits to
out-of-state travel. Motion is to adopt, so receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel Jordane.
Yes. Um, 27E, this $4,440, um, is actually gonna take the money from veterans' benefits direct and provide it to the, uh, HR department. This was requested by Kelly Curran, who's doing a great job for us. Um, this specifically is to do an assessment of accrued paid time off, including, um, onboarding and creating internal efficiencies between departments relative to accrued paid time, time off. Specifically, uh, I know myself, I had filed an order that we would create a computer module so that we have the electronic tracking of time off of our employees. One of the things that's been an efficiency concern is that currently, we do not have a departmental electronic tracking, um, for the employees' time off. We're sort of on the honor system of making sure people are properly tracking their time off. Um, this will inject, um, greater, uh, this assessment will study the opportunity for us to add on, um, modules into munis so that this can be done, um, and to ensure that people are not taking time in excess of their amounts. It's also going to be able to produce reports so that department heads can evaluate how much paid time off is sitting on the books of the different employees in their department. So, this is $4,440, extremely well spent. So I do commend, uh, both Kelly and the mayor for bringing that forward. Uh, with respect to 27G, this is directly related to the Veterans Department. Uh, Jesus Peraria, who, um, is doing another, again, a fine job for us as the Veterans Director. This is to attend a conference coming up, uh, relative to his area. Jesus will also be providing us a report from that conference to tell us the different things that he's learned and what, uh, benefit that will be to the community, uh, so that perhaps we can either do things more efficiently, have better savings, and/or provide additional benefits, uh, to our veterans. So, the Finance Committee supported both of these appropriations and recommends them to you for adoption.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will, will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for both.
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
For your vote, you approve those two. 27F, Community Finance who is referred. Uh, request for 75,000 from firefighters to overtime, recommend it be adopted. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel Jordane.
Yes, Mr. President. This is as straightforward, um, right there as you see. Uh, the fire chief came in, said that he needed an additional $75,000 in overtime. As a general rule, it's related to being short a number of firefighters, and therefore it freed up these dollars from the salary lines. They have been using overtime to, to do that. Um, he does feel that it's still at a very manageable level. Uh, he is taking the money from elsewhere in his department, and these are resources necessary to keep the department fully staffed. So, uh, the Finance Committee supported this unanimously, uh, the 75,000, and recommends it to you for your approval.
Seeing no one else, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the 75,000.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
For your vote, you approve that one. 27H, Community Finance, uh, request of 22,768 from inventory control coordinator, head clerk, two accounts payable specialists and office specialist. Uh, motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel Jordane.
Yes, this request comes to us by way of our purchasing director, Lori Belanger. Two positions in her department have been requested to be reclassified to higher grades. Um, she stated that these individuals are doing significantly additional work and doing additionally complex work. And as a result, um, she is requesting that these, um, classification changes be made and that these dollars be appropriated. Um, it will have a financial impact, uh, overall to the department. Um, I believe it was somewhere in the order of approximately $15,000 per year, something, something along that range. Um, and anyways, uh, Lori obviously is doing, again, another one of our department heads doing a very fine job, um, and is trying to create opportunities and to retain staff for people that, um, are doing additional work, doing more complex work, and felt these effectively, um, reclassifications were appropriate based on the people in the positions and to be able to retain her help. So, um, we, in balance, obviously concerned about creating new cost, um, but on balance, supported Lori in making these, uh, changes and, uh, recommend them to the council for their approval. We do think it's in the best interest of the purchasing department to do these.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I just have one question?
Sure.
Because I wasn't able to attend that committee meeting?
Sure.
So, um, to the chair, I was just wondering, did our consulting attorney look at the grade, grading for the jobs?
That's, uh, correct. We were told that, uh, these positions had been reviewed. Um, they are involving a couple of union positions, um, that the S17 and 20 grades be moved to S30 and 33 grades. But yes, we were told that they had those internal approvals.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, so pass the first reading. It was done. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
For your vote, you approve that one. Uh, 27A, uh, from finance, hereby request 200,000 from patrolmen to overtime. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel Jordane.
Yes, uh, this request comes to us by way of the Hoyle Police Department. The police chief came in to support his, uh, transfer request. Um, Chief Pratt made a couple of points to us. First of all, that even though, one, he's funding this from within his own department, this is not extra funds for the Hoyle Police Department. That's an important key point. He has a number of unfilled positions. He's at, down, he was funded at approximately 92 positions for patrolmen. He's currently at approximately 83. He needs these overtime dollars in order to, uh, make sure that appropriate staffing levels. Moreover, um, he stated to us that even with this 200,000, which will be sufficient for the remainder of the fiscal year, he did also state, this will be the lowest amount spent on overtime in recent history at approximately $920,000 plus or minus. So, um, that is less than what has been spent, um, historically, and these funds are needed to keep, uh, the cops on the beat. So the, the, uh, Finance Committee was happy to, uh, support the chief, uh, in this request.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I did make this one, and, uh, Counsel Jordane is correct. Uh, I just would add that, you know, Chief Pratt, working, going back to when, uh, Terry Murphy was our, was our mayor, acting mayor, Chief Pratt was challenged when he came on duty to, uh, to look at the overtime, uh, and to, uh, you know, to get good control over it. And he's done a tremendous job. Uh, prior to his tenure, we were spending about $38,000 per pay period on this particular line item of overtime. He's got it down now below $35,000 per pay period, and that thus reflects the, uh, the difference that Counsel Jordane just pointed out. Both our chiefs, the, the prior vote on, with the fire department, are doing a tremendous job with not just, uh, positions that are, are vacated and, uh, unusual to have nine police officers down at any one given time, but also with COVID. And the fire department got hit by some COVID, uh, uh, situations where, you know, uh, you know, Chief Preska Fowski had to really scramble to make sure he had the manpower out there. So I commend both of them and, uh, concur with the, uh, with the chiefs that this money is necessary.
So, mo-, up, Counsel Rivera.
I think my only question is, is that, um, for the new fiscal year, would, um, for FY '23, will they put it into the budget or try to, to the best of their abilities, right? Because, uh, budgets are hit or miss sometimes. Um, all of this, so that we don't have to constantly come back and just continue to transfer funds? Or is that just procedure that's been the way for a very long time now? Cause like, I mean, what I'm learning in, at school, right, in my MPA program, is you try to put a budget together and you try to map out any type of emergencies or any type of situations that are technically uncalled for or unaccounted for. Um, and in a sense, to me, it's like, I know it's, it's, every department should be doing that, pretty much.
Well, I, I think the, when doing the budget, to answer the question, is you're mapping out for 93 patrol.
Yeah.
Of which you only have, I think it was 83.
Right.
So right away, you're forced into having people come in to cover for those who aren't there.
Right.
So it's an automatic overtime. So you're taking from the line item of 93 to then surplant it into the overtime to cover for that shortfall.
Alright.
So you're not adding more money to the budget, you're just moving the money.
No, I, I totally understand you're not adding more budget, money to the budget, but it's just, in a sense, you have less patrolmen to, I don't know, I, I feel like there should be, I don't, there, there has to be another system in place because all I, to me, it's like, there is a lot of money going on into overtime. Um, I would like to see what other communities are paying with regards to overtime, um, compared to what, what we pay. Because at the end of the day, um, I think we shr-, we, didn't we shrink our, uh, volunteer, what are they called? The volunteer officers?
Auxiliary.
Auxiliary police, right? We shrunk that. Uh, in a sense, to me, auxiliary police could help fill in some of the overtime. in some of the overtime. So, that way, and I, and I know probably contractually that, that you can't be done, but in the future, for the next contract, is trying to come, kind, kind of, kind of trying to do that. Because other communities use Auxiliary Officers to fill in for overtime. And, uh, for me, that's a best practice that I think that Hoyoke should kind of be looking into, more or less. Um, but yeah, that's just my piece.
Counselor McGivern.
Uh, good questions from Counselor Rivera. We, we didn't shrink on, on the auxiliary. We didn't shrink the use of the auxiliary. The Police Reform Act did. We had to change, the, the Police Department had to change the way they use auxiliary according to that act itself. Um, great budget question to, uh, Counselor Rivera. Uh, what we've learned over the years is overtime is not a give me, and, and we need to challenge, especially our bigger departments, uh, whether it's snow removal, fire safety, you know, police safety, that overtime should come back on a maybe quarterly basis and let us know where you stand. I think it works to where it keeps the numbers down. If you look back ten years, you'd be surprised at what the line item for overtime was. And I think we've done a, a fair job of reducing the overtime spend.
And so with that, Counselor Tomlin.
Uh, just to, to the Chair, to Counselor Rivera, I, I think, uh, budget time, we, we do do that. We have them, you know, they submit a budget, they put an overtime amount in there, and usually the council cuts that down a little bit. And then that gets them to come back, you know, in three months or six months. But they just go out and ask for one million dollars, and we just say, yeah, take it, and then they're gonna use it. So, it's sort of keeping a, a check on the, the different departments with the big money spent.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, w- the only other comment I would say to, to my esteemed colleague would be, if we really wanted to do this the right way, what you would is you would have a consultant review and do an analysis across multiple communities, how they're structured, the, the number of, uh, police officers, the amount of overtime, the spending on all these things, and do across community, uh, by community, and do this for multiple departments, you know, um, basically do a management survey. Um, I'm not sure, I would encourage the mayor to do that. I, I think periodically it should be done. I don't think the city's really done one. Uh, from time to time, they do them if there's problems. Um, I know we recently had filed a request to have an audit done of the Hoyoke Police Department, and we'll see what that comes. Theoretically, they should also compare standards, uh, and benchmarks to what other departments are doing. Um, that would be helpful. Uh, but a really, a true, to get the answer that you're looking for as to make it operationally tangible data, that you could make a, a legislative finding, uh, funding decision on, you would have to have data comparing, Chickaby does this, Westfield does this, Hoyoke does this, and they have these circa, you know, how many arrests, how many this, how many that, how do they do, you know, the spreads of this many in detectives, this many in this? Because, um, right now, what it appears is why there's overtime is, yes, we fund for ninety-two, but ultimately, a bunch of people retire, people are out on injured on duty, this ones are sick, you know, there's a whole array of reasons why we never have a full complement of the positions. So, now you're in overtime, backfilling because you don't have your full complement. You never have the ninety-two, like, we never have the actual ninety or ninety-two position. So, it's this constant overtime battle. Um, and, and, and your point is well taken, but I, I don't know if the city's willing to invest the time, and then it gets into the politics. Well, we're not quite the same as Lemonster or Framingham, and then, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes around on that if you try to actually do something with the information.
Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just, uh, I guess, a question or a point of clarification. I was under the impression that we, um, did this for more transparency because there was some abuse in the past. Is that not correct?
I think it's more just to have a better understanding and tracking of the overtime to... I'm not, I'm not a... Maybe. I'm not gonna go with all the language that was used, because I'm just gonna say it's, uh, for us to have a double check on it.
Yeah.
Counselor Rivera.
Uh, just one more question. And, and is there, so, when it's transferred to Patrolmen, is it, is there a difference line item for like supervisor, like officers, or Patrolmen is Patrolmen and Supervisors is Supervisors? Cause I, I kind of feel like another thing that could be kind of, having the prices go up is like, who is actually doing most of the overtime? If we have someone that gets paid way more, like, on the higher scale, if they're doing a lot more overtime than someone that's making sixty thousand to seventy thousand, like, that kind of throws the balances off significantly. Like, we have some people that are making, I mean, a significant, I mean, as they should. Um, they, they're making a significant, uh, amount of money, but like, when it gets to the point where you have them doing overtime duties, and, and I know that the system goes by like seniority, and there's, there's a process to it. Um, but it's just, I think for the benefit of the city, it's just trying to find us a, a, a way or a mechanism to try to make it so that it's beneficial for us overall. Um, but yeah, that's what I kind of want to put out. And thank you guys for educating me on some of the stuff that I didn't realize at first.
Counselor Tomlin.
I want some more education. Uh, I've been here for a while. I, I, and sometimes I run into police officers. Just real briefly, sometimes, I understand what you're saying, it'd be better to pay somebody overtime that's making fifty thousand and somebody's making eighty-five thousand. And unfortunately, it's not an easy fix because sometimes younger people don't want to work the overtime. And sometimes the over people don't either, but they're forced to. You're working in, you know, an eight to four shift, all of a sudden, they say, we ain't got nobody from the four to midnight, so you're working it. You don't want to, but you have to. So, some people are making the extra money. It could be a sergeant, lieutenant. That's just the way it works. Uh, and it does cost a little bit more when you're paying a lieutenant than a regular Patrolman.
Alright, with that, motion is to pass the first reading.
First reading, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All the post.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk Cora Ross, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote you approve that. Twenty-eight A, we're on to Public Safety. Uh, let's see. Order that the street number, three eighty R, Dwight Street, changed to three eighty-two Dwight Street. Confusion between the buildings. Uh, this is recommended to be adapted. So, it will receive, adopt. Counselor Rivera.
Um, so this order was filed by, uh, Counselor Jenny Rivera. Um, apparently, I think Jenny, I, do I have to suspend the rules for Jenny? No, right?
No, no, no.
Okay. Uh, I, I would like to have Jenny speak on the order, and then I could speak, speak on the results.
Okay, I had received an email from Mr. Jarvis, I believe it is, um, and they were having issues with deliveries or even, um, safety personnel going up to the area because of it being three eighty R. He did speak to our city engineer, which he agreed and said, um, that it can be changed to three eighty-two to make it easier and not having issues with either the Police Department, Fire Department, and deliveries getting sent to the wrong, or going to the wrong area.
Yeah, so, um, apparently, uh, the addresses, um, there's like a, I, I don't have it in front of me, but there's like a, uh, an, an A, and then there's a number that's similar to it. So, so that the only thing that separates the same number is the letter A. So, when police calls are had or, or mail is delivered, or someone is knocking at the door because they use GPS, they end up going to the wrong door or to the wrong apartment. So, they, they asked Jenny to file the order to kind of like fix the confusion. Um, according to, but the, the city engineer, he said that it's not something that is very simple to change, but this one is actually a simple fix, and that he does recommend the change because of, he's heard of the situation happening in the past, um, with regards to people delivering mail and knocking on the wrong doors, and that, um, he feels that it, it would be beneficial for the city for it to, to, for the order to go through and for it to change overall. So, we're recommending, the committee recommended for the order to be adopted. Um, I believe it was five zero, no, three zero.
Three zero. Yeah, and this, uh, the engineer, Bob Parent, said it really comes through his
Right.
office for doing the changes.
Yep.
He's just telling us that he will do it, and we're just recommending that he go forward with it.
Right.
But it's through the engineer that, that authority happens. Anyone else? Alright, so motion is to receive, adopt, and confirm the change. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, twenty-eight, do you want to take up twenty-eight B through K as a pack?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
So, motion is suspend rules, take up B through K as a package. All those in favor? All opposed? Abbreviate reading? Yep. Abbreviate reading. This is, uh, that they're all complied with. So, the first one is a traffic study be done on the corner of West Springfield and Saint Jerome. C is, uh, that a traffic study be done on Sergeant Street, observing the traffic between Saint Jerome and Sycamore. D is that, uh, Captain Marotti come in to get an update on safety procedures for City Hall, uh, subcommittee meetings. E is, uh, order that O Peds City Engineer, D P W, explore improving fence, grass, uh, canal, street, uh, and fixing up that area on the bike path, complied with. F is that the city engineer look into potential change in driveway into People's Bank off of Beach Street only. G is that the public safety invite in the Chair, in Vice Chair of Bike Ped Advisory Committee. Um, H is that, uh, H G N E repair the light at Laurel Park. Uh, I is D P W repair the fountain at the same park. J is that the public safety, uh, order that D P W put up a warning sign informing drivers of incoming, uh, raised sidewalks. And K is that the city take serious steps to consider, uh, create, uh, methods of enforcement with regards to ordinances. All those are, uh, complied with. Under discussion, Counselor Rivera.
So, um, a lot of these orders, uh, have, have been filed recently, and there are some that were filed in the past. Um, so I brought them all up, and, um, uh, a lot of them, they were just pretty much straightforward. We had, uh, discussion around most of them, um, with regards to, uh, I believe, uh, the one that Counselor Gibner had filed with regards to, uh, more enforcement. Um, what, the order is complied with, um, I think for us, where it came down to is finding out, um, how the enforcement and what that's gonna look like, right? Um, because we do have the rules and the regulations already set forth and in place with regards to traffic and, um, some of the lines that are supposed to like stop for visit, uh, that, that's supposed to improve visibility, and with regards to like some of the, um, uh, the stop sign violation stuff. So, it's just about more or less enforcing it and finding someone that can enforce it, because it, it is a lot for the police to actually be doing a lot of this work when they're focused on a lot of the other work. Um, so, that is pretty much where we came with regards to that order. Um, the other ones are a lot more straightforward, to be honest. Um, that, there's no complexity behind them, um, with regards to that.
Yeah.
If we'd like to move on to the L and N.
So, B, C, F, I think it was, you know, the traffic studies were done, uh, City Hall, security was done, um, and so on and so forth. So, the makers of the orders were fine that they were complied with.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so on B through K, all those in favor?
Aye.
All the post.
Aye.
Twenty-eight L through N, take up as a package?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? L is that the public safety, uh, order that the acting mayor and city council president, uh, plan a target date for opening City Hall. Um, twenty-eight M, twenty-eight M, or that the Public Safety Committee meet with representatives from any neighborhood watch programs to discuss ideas of improving each program and building active, uh, cooperation with the police. And N is that the public safety, uh, an order for the public safety to meet with the principal of the high school, the receiver, and the mayor, and the chief of police, uh, to discuss, uh, certain language that was, I think, going on in the schools at the time. All those are leave to withdraw. Under discussion, Counselor Rivera.
So, a lot of these orders are a lot of orders that were filed in the past, and I am, as other counselors are doing, trying to clean up the jacket so that way it's not so packed. And, um, apparently, every council's full meeting, we end up getting new ones anyways. So, I'm working on trying to clean out as much as I can, um, from the past, so that way, um, I can take up all the new orders too. And for anyone that has filed an order, and if I haven't gotten it to it yet, please feel free to reach out to me, cause I'm just putting up whatever I see first, and then I go back to the old stuff, and I put up at least five to ten orders from the old stuff, so that way I can clean that stuff out. So, if you guys have anything that you feel like is, is pertinent, please let me know, so that way I can put it forward. Thank you, guys.
So, with that, uh, twenty-eight L through N is leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No Public Service, um, D G N R. Next was, no, no, no government relation. Oh, wait, that's wrong. That's, so D G N R is up. It's weird how it's reading that way. Alright, so... You're up. The B. All those down or down? Three A. And D G N R, who was referred, uh, Alicia Zoller, uh, and the Community Block Grant Applications, waiting disposition. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so, last night, actually, we had a very great, uh, conversation with, um, uh, Alicia Zoller, who's the head of Community Development, and we reviewed, um, all of the, uh, proposals that were submitted, um, and were also given, um, overview on the recommendations of the Office for Community Development, the Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as the Mayor's first recommendations, um, for community development block grants. All in all, uh, good conversation and no major changes. We had, uh, some questions, um, and suggestions specifically, um, about allocating a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks. Um, that was, uh, changed, um, and, uh, moved from the, um, line item proposal for, uh, the micro enterprise and small business grants. Um, but we did advocate that if and when there are additional funds available, um, since HUD has not released their final allocations for the City of Hoyoke, then, um, we, uh, really want the micro enterprise and small business grants to be one of the priorities. Um, and then the other thing, we had a couple of questions on, but it looks like it has been answered by Community Development, was specifically, um, the proposal submitted by the Fire Department for the purchase of Sparky the Dog Fire Safety Training Suit. Um, and, uh, we got information on that, that, um, that actually is a pretty hefty, uh, purchase, all things considered, three thousand five hundred dollars, but, um, it's a, it's, it lasts a while. The last time we got one was seventeen years ago, so, um, there's that. And then, uh, someone had a question about the, um, uh, first time home buyers program. It is actually free for Hoyoke residents, and, uh, majority of those folks do, um, uh, take the class, um, uh, that are Hoyoke residents. So, I don't think I left anything out. That was the fun for C D B G last night.
So, that's right, what? Uh, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, to the Chair, that was a, a well, well-done meeting last night. And to, uh, Counselor Bartley, I think we, we all agree that the, the fact that Alicia Zoller makes the presentation makes our job a lot easier. The recommendations are just what, what they are, recommendations. The mayor has the final say in block grant monies. Uh, we hope that our new mayor, Garcia, may listen to our recommendations. They're minor, but they're important. Uh, one was, cause we recognize the huge softball league is, a lot of young, young kids are getting shut out. Uh, Counselor Jenny Rivera pointed that out, you know, because it just, families cannot afford to send two or three kids into the league. So, our recommendations are gonna go to the mayor. I, I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution with recommendations. The resolution is to accept the block grant monies and to accept the home program monies. The home program monies are for Hoyoke, Chickaby, and Westfield. Uh, once again, Hoyoke is the lead, and we also get the biggest piece of that pie. I think we're at fifty-four percent this year. Um, and the block grant monies, I, I'll say this every year, you know, their, their federal revenue sharing is not what it used to be and not what it should be. Um, why, why the federal government is spending billions of dollars around the world is, is a good thing, but they're drying up on the federal revenue sharings with local communities. but they're drying up on the federal revenue sharings with local communities. 20 years ago, you know, we used to get five times what we're getting this year. 30 years ago, we used to get 10 times what we're getting this year. And it's, it's sad. It's, it's a sad commentary on the way our federal, and it's our federal tax dollars are being spent. But the resolution is our most important vote tonight. I believe, uh, Mr. President, that you have a copy of with your package.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the, uh, the motion.
One second, Counselor Puelo, and then we'll.
Yeah, I'm just gonna second, yes, I'll.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I, I wanna echo Counselor, what Counselor McGivern said about Alicia Zoller. That was my first time seeing her in person and it was, it was suggested to me by one of my colleagues to reach out to her and I, I had some questions about the CPA and she's very, very knowledgeable. We're at the, the community block development grants and she's, she's very knowledgeable about it. I really appreciate her getting back to me. And I, to, to let everybody know, so I was on the school building advisory building committee yesterday. That's why I was a little late, but I did wanna make this one because I had had some questions about the Sparky the Dog and the, the first time home buyer classes. The first time home buyer classes was, was all set. She got back to me, I think in the application it had said that they wanted to charge people $100 per class. I was like, well, wait a minute. So, uh, it was a scribner, as we like to call it around here in the application. So the Sparky the Dog, we ended up getting the, the quote back from the fire department and my, my question would be, are we, are we voting for all of these together? Because I still have issues with it, I, I don't think I can support it. The, so the application that, that they submitted for the, for the Sparky the Dog, I understand that we wanna split, like it's like 45, what is it, $3,500, $4,500, I think?
35.
$4,500 and I think that they said that 35. And I think some of it is supposed to go towards coloring books, but I, I just, I'm not happy with the, the way the application was done. I think every other application has it broken down as to what specific amount we're spending on what. And I think that just for the purposes of being clear, when we're filling these applications out, I think departments need to understand that they need to tell us exactly what they're spending this money on. And then the, the, the part with the Sparky the Dog, I mean, it essentially turns out as a Halloween costume, I still think. And if you go on Amazon or if you do a Google search, you can find it and it's the same dog down to the same spots on his face, the same costume on another site for a lot less money. And I, I did look into it and I think what I saw was that the, the company that they're buying it from, I think it's like Robo, Robotonics or something, is some sort of like national fire safety supplier. I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I, I, I just can't support, I can't vote for, you know, $3,500 for a Halloween costume, thank you.
Counselor Jordaine.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, I wanted to commend the committee for doing a great job. I also wanted to, in particular, and there's so many great programs that we support under the CDBG block grant. But two in particular I wanted to just, uh, give extra kudos to this particular year was the school playgrounds, I thought that was a particularly great project, and the $40,000 for Margaret's Pantry, particularly in these inflationary times where I have myself heard from a number of different families here about, um, just stretching budgets, trying to make it meet and to making sure that we have food programs that are out there that are available to the most needy in the community. And Margaret's Pantry has really served that mission for decades and decades and decades. And, uh, I think it's just great, it's a great contribution to South Hoyoke and to all the people, um, that are there. And I would encourage people to donate to, to Margaret's Pantry and to the clothing center that they also have, St. Jude's that's there, uh, and a number of the great programs. It's, it's been really a big plus for the community, thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just as I said last night, uh, thanks to everybody around the meeting, it was a well-run meeting. The, um, the discussion I think was, uh, pretty important, even though the dollars, as Joe said, were, were, uh, kinda tight for this year. I, I think you'll notice that we, we took seriously the recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Again, um, uh, nine, nine or 10 volunteers, um, we appreciate their work. Uh, I know the chair's gonna speak with the, uh, head of the department to make sure that there's, there's a city counselor on the Citizens Advisory Committee. We just had a little slip up this year and that's, that's understandable with a new counselor and all the things going on, so. So, uh, but it's, but to me, it's always important to have a counselor, um, on board. Uh, 'cause I really like, I, I wanna hear what the counselor has positioned on these 'cause it really helps me to inform my, uh, my vote. So I'm sorry we didn't have one, but still, kudos to the Citizens Advisory Committee. You'll see on here for, for, um, non-public service, there, there are some fairly unique projects. They're a little bit unusual, um, but we're, we're grateful that they're going forward. So we generally support what the mayor wants, wants to do. And then you'll see for the public services, there's certainly some, in my time here, uh, some unique, uh, especially the girls' softball, so we were very grateful. I know the Wardman Counselor supported an increase, there was a, a great amendment by Joe and everybody really had a good discussion and it was unanimous. So this is one of the very few CDBG meetings that I can recall, there, there's no controversy. I think every single vote we held was unanimous, uh, which is historic. So, uh, so that was kinda nice. And, uh, so the only problem is, uh, you know, money's tight and, uh, we get it. But I do wanna make one small point that, that's, you know, fortunately because of ARPA funds, we, we've had, we've had some pretty good projects. I know that Mayor, Mayor Murphy was unbelievably, um, open and forthcoming. No, did I, we have disagreements? Absolutely. I, I had a pretty strong disagreement on especially one of his, uh, one of his, um, projects, but, uh, which was 1.2 million dollars, however, however, and I had it right here and on this floor. But, um, however, he did a great job and I'm, I'm really confident that Mayor Garcia is gonna do the same thing that's gonna have an open process, because as I spoke to him before the meeting, Mr. President, before this meeting, as I said before, I know he watches these meetings and he wants to get public input, he wants to get counselors' input. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to this going forward. I hope the mayor accepts our recommendations, but as you, as you said, as Joe said, uh, the mayor can do what he wants. With ARPA funds, it's a very similar type of a, type of an arrangement, uh, although we're talking a higher dollar value for sure. But I look forward to the ARPA recommendations and I look forward to having a spirit debate back in DGR and, uh, good job by the chair, because again, it's not easy. And like I said, like I, I mean, I, I literally don't remember any non-controversial, I mean, we always had controversy and last night was, uh, smooth sailing, thank you.
Anyone for, uh, Counselor Rivera, then Counselor Rivera.
I would like to echo the sentiment with regards to, uh, the, what Counselor Jordaine and Counselor Bartley mentioned, um, with regards to, uh, the project for, uh, Margaret's Pantry, um, awesome project, um, well-needed and well-deserved, as well as, uh, girls', uh, softball. I coach, I'm also on the board, I coached before I came here. A lot of the girls are, are gonna be benef, it's gonna benefit the program overall, especially trying to get more girls involved. While we were at the practice at Kelly School today, there were like three or four other girls on the side just watching, like, what's happening here? This has never happened, really, because this is the first time they actually practiced at Kelly Field too, as well. So yeah, the, there's another point that I kinda wanted to make with regards to the Scott's Tower project, right? I am in full favor of the project. I, I just feel a little uncomfortable as to how it's being presented because to my understanding, CDBG money, um, is supposed to be spent in certain parts of the area, certain areas in the community, um, with regards to low income and that certain demographics. And the way they're utilizing it is they're saying that Boden Village is the closest proximity to it, which it is, and it does qualify. It's just for me, I feel like it's a stretch. I will still vote in favor of the project, it's just I, I just don't know how comfortable I feel, um, with stretching projects to make certain things fit within them. But again, I'm with it, I like the project. I, I used to go to Scott's Tower as a kid, it would be cool to see it be reinvigorated and live and popping all over again, like it once was back in whatever day that was, because I was not alive yet. But, um, yeah, just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Anyone, uh, Counselor Rivera.
Hi, so I wanna speak on the Sparky the Fire Dog. I was reading into the email we got from her and it does say, it might be the difference of, between Amazon and the website she's using, because it says it comes installed with a dual, dual fan cooling system to keep the operator cool, which makes sense because once they're in the school and you have 30 little ones, 60 little ones all hugging that person, could be the difference. Maybe that fan in there, making it more expensive than a regular Halloween costume? That's what I'm thinking. Nancy.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who's worked in costume for the opera and for, behind the scenes on many things like this, I can attest to the quality difference of the actual costume that comes from Robotico or whatever versus something on Amazon. Those Amazon companies, unfortunately, at this point, they're stealing images from actual products. So when you order that $100 costume instead of the $3,500 costume, what you get is like this paper mache look-alike weird thing that doesn't hold up for one wearing. It wouldn't, it, I mean, I don't know this costume specifically, but having worked in costume, like, for the last 12 years, um, I can tell you that what they're selling on Amazon probably doesn't compare at all and they're probably just stolen images from the actual product to sell as like a Halloween, a cheap Halloween knockoff. So unfortunately, what you get is not what you're expecting. And if they wear, if they've used the last one for 17 years, it's probably because they spent the money on it so that they don't have to buy it anymore, so just my little tidbit on that.
Counselor Tolman.
Yeah, real briefly, I, uh, I had another commitment before the meeting and then I had something after. I tried to get down here and five of eight, everything was done. So I, I did get to talk to Jeff, uh, about a couple of the changes and I was really happy to see, um, $100,000 going towards the sidewalks. Um, and also the, uh, the warming center that, uh, we'll be using next year, uh, you know, I think it's an important, uh, along with, uh, Margaret's Pantry, um, to have that warming center. And I wanna thank the Madam Chair, uh, for putting the meeting together so well and, uh, not too many, uh, changes. And we went along with the CAC and a lot of this and the mayor, so it was really, uh, really helpful. Um, and Sparky the Dog, I did get the email today and I share your concerns, a lot of money for a costume, I mean, and I did a little bit of theater work, I wasn't in the opera, but, um, costume are costly. Um, and this one lasted, what, 17 years? Uh, I did see, um, Sparky the Dog last year and, uh, I think it was around Easter up at, um, up at the park. Um, and they were, you know, with the fire truck and, uh, it's really effective, you know, for kids, you know? And I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, how does that costume and how does that, you know, event where they go to different schools really help these kids? And, uh, it really makes a difference in kids' lives and if you can save one kid's life, you know, by this, this $3,500 costume, I think that's a great investment.
Counselor Malo Vales.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question as far as like the process. So after we grant the money, how do we make sure that the money's being spent for these specific purposes outlined in the application?
So it'll go back to the mayor for final approval and his ultimate recommendations. You can leave it as is or move some around. And then once that's done, it'll be, uh, tracked by, you know, each department that receives it, they'll do the accounting for it.
Okay.
Counselor McGivern?
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic question. Um, we, Alicia Zoller and her department have to track this money by federal standards and they, uh, they are actually audited by the federal government over the course of the, uh, each of these projects themselves. And at some points, I know Counsel, Counsel Bartley could probably explain this better than me, if the money is not spent the way it was allocated, that money comes back into, uh, into the fund and can be reallocated.
Thank you. No, I just, yeah, I was just wondering, because I know like housing authorities asking for $10,000 for the first time home buyer workshops, based on what I know, they haven't really been able to because of the pandemic, everything else. Um, so I, I guess, just wanna make sure that they're gonna do what they're proposing, but that's it, thank you.
Counselor Puelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think that's a great question and I think maybe part of that is filing an order to have folks come down and make sure that they present and let us know what it is that they're doing with the money. And I just wanna clarify, you know, I'm, I'm not against Sparky the Dog, I think Sparky the Dog's awesome. I'm against a $3,500 Sparky the Dog if, you know, if we do a little bit of research and, and we find something cheaper. So I guess my question of the body would be, is there some sort of procurement law or something that says that they have to get more than one quote on something or is there? So, okay, so maybe, alright, so maybe, uh, as part of my homework, I'll reach out and then maybe figure out what the other quotes were and see if there was a difference, thank you.
Anyone for Counselor Bartley?
I'm not gonna speak on Sparky, but I, I will. But I did wanna say, I, I think there is a couple outstanding questions, uh, and I think that the solution to this, and it makes good sense to me, I never thought of it till right now, but, uh, but based upon the questions asked, the only time we really have Alicia in here is basically now. But it's probably not a bad idea to file an order to have the department head, who, and that's her job, as Counselor McGivern rightly pointed out, to track all this stuff, to, to, to ensure that the funds are being spent. If they're not in a timely fashion, if, if an extension can't be given, the funds are pulled back after they're not even given, they're, they're withheld and they're ultimately, ultimately reprogrammed. And she has a certain sum of money that's reprogrammed. However, you don't get to leave it in the kitty forever, you, there's a, there's a finite amount of time. But it would be helpful, not necessarily to have Alicia come in, but to certainly give a, uh, some of communication to this body, uh, every six months or so on, um, on what's happening with the money. Uh, we've, we've talked about these things forever, uh, when we do, um, approve grants. Mo, most of the time, we don't even hear from the department, even though we have it in ordinance now. So, you know, we approve the grants, the monies go out, do we ever hear? And but, except for rare exception, I mean, the police department is now getting back to us. And I might add that we had Lieutenant Hart write up to me on the parade route with motorcycle. And I was like complaining about that for nine years and finally we got a motorcycle, so. But, you know, these things happen, so that was grant, grant funds and it turned into something real. And, uh, and so I, I think that's, I think those are valid questions. And if we can have more communication from the department and Alicia, I know she'll be on point, I would probably bear a lot of fruit, thank you.
See, no one further. So the motion was to receive, adopt, and accept the recommendations. And on the back page here, it does call for the yays and nays, so we'll have the clerk call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the recommendations as outlined.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Bergos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Malo Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Only because I don't wanna vote no on everything else, yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Okay.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved that one. 30B, uh, from DGNR was referred. A vote of the council accept a proposal to sell 144 High Street for $5,000. Recommended that be adopted. Counselor Murphy Ramboletti.
Thank you. We had, uh, this discussed at our March 23rd meeting, I believe, and, um, it was, uh, great to hear from, um, the Office of Planning and Development. With them, they, uh, they introduced, um, they gave a little background on what the RFP process is like, um, and what that entails. And there were, um, I believe, three responses that were submitted and each of them were for the same, uh, price point amount. This particular, uh, proposal would be for an existing business in Hoyoke, Paper City Clothing Company, who is currently located on Dwight Street. And they are proposing to renovate this space and, uh, turn it into a commercial space on the first floor and, uh, residential on the, the second floor. They have, uh, estimated an investment of about $300,000, um, to bring this up to, to date. It was a great discussion, great questions, um, and this was what was recommended to us, um, by the mayor's office and, uh, through the, the purchasing department. So, uh, do I make a motion that we approve this?
Yeah, so the motion would be to, uh, receive, adopt, and kind report and approve the conveyance.
Thank you.
Anyone, Counselor Puelo?
I think Counselor Malo wanna go first? Oh, I thought you raised his hand, yeah, thank you. So, so I, I, I did ask a couple of questions for this one. I, I think, I thought about it for a while and I, I think what I'm gonna end up doing is I'm gonna be voting no for it. So I, I understand everybody's argument with the, you know, we, we gotta generate tax dollars and we gotta get property off the roll. I just think that the deals that we could be making for the city as far as these properties could be a little bit better. I did file an order to have that conversation. I appreciate Counselor Malo Vales co-sponsoring it with me. Uh, but I think it's a conversation that needs to be had. I think they're getting a really, really good deal. I understand that they're gonna be investing a lot of money into the property. But, you know, as far as are they actually gonna end up spending that money and what rights does the city have afterwards, once it's all said and done? The low income part is, is, is a good. have afterwards, once it's all said and done? The low income part is, is, is a good, is a big piece for me. You know, are they gonna rehab this building that they now own and then they can just go out and rent it for a market rate upstairs? Maybe they should have to give that up. Maybe rent it for seventy-five percent for a certain amount of time until the city gets some sort of, you know, until, until we're satisfied. I mean, they're, they're getting a pretty good deal. On a, on a side note, so I, I joined a bowling league and I went out with my buddies and I ran into Katie Moon and, and we had a really good conversation about this. It was Thursday, it was salsa night, so she was out there. We were having a good time. And she, she completely understands, you know, I'm not against Paper City Clothing at all. I think they do a lot of good things for the community. And, you know, I, I wish them nothing but the best. I just think that this proposal is too, too good. And I think we need to have more conversations to, to change it up a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I said at the committee meeting, I'll just say it real quickly here this evening. This, well, first of all, this piece of property was condemned. It's a former art studio itself. It was, the city does not want to own property. We acquired it through tax title because of the, a prior owner got into some, some issues and could not do, could not afford the property or did not, you know, take care of it, not due to no fault of his own. And eventually, the city took it over. And the goal of the city is to take property we acquire like this and get it back on the tax rolls. The thought of the sale price equalling or matching what the new investors are gonna put into the property is taken into consideration. And in this case, something that was about to be torn down is now gonna be an art studio again with the residential component. I, I, you know, if it's low income, I, I disagree because we, we need more market rent property downtown. We need, you know, property that the assessment is gonna equal the investment of people who have businesses and people who want to both work and live downtown and, and to, to operate their own businesses. So this, this is, is a win for everybody. You know, we, we have a young couple that's gonna open up something that's gonna be an attraction. We have restaurants and buyers in the area. When people come into this studio, they're gonna be using other, other businesses within the area. It brings people downtown. It, it takes a eyesore off the deck, off the category of, of being an eyesore, and it puts it back on the tax rolls. It makes all the sense in the world. The city puts a reverter on all property we sell. And, and if the, the owners, the new owners don't live up to what their, what their proposal was, the city has a right to execute that reverter.
Counselor Anderson Bergos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McGivern basically said everything I was thinking of saying. So I approve that message. What I don't approve of is that giant jacket behind him. But anyway, on the matter, yeah, this is, this is gonna be good for Holyoke. High Street is, is, is on its way to successfully being a boost in our economic, in our economy. Fixing downtown is, and having someone interested in buying a building that was technically gonna be taken apart is, is, or demolished, rather, is a good investment for the city and the new business owner altogether. So I am full support of this. This is, this is really good for Holyoke, especially downtown Holyoke. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put into context. So this might, this'll take half a minute, but no longer, I hope. First off, I, I don't want to really get into the rental part because that's private. Second off, I, I'm pretty happy that there's gonna be private investment in the downtown corridor. Specifically, the proponents of this are using, you know, it looks like family money, but essentially, it's, it's, you know, it's basically a private lender that's gonna in, invest a lot of money, up to three hundred thousand dollars or maybe two hundred ninety thousand. I can't remember what it was. But, but there's also a backup investor as well. It's gonna hopefully take a eyesore and improve it with commercial space and with, as we saw by recent news articles, private, private housing for, for rental housing. If we put into context, Mr. President, we all remember the vote we took relative to East Hampton Savings Bank, where we sold that plot of land for five thousand dollars. I, I shake my, I voted for that. I shake my head on that vote. I've been shaking my head on that vote for years because we knew we were selling it to a, to a pretty wealthy company, East Hampton Savings Bank. At the time I took the vote, I felt like we weren't in a position to say no. Fast forward a year or two, we had a similar disastrous proposal put forth by, by Oped for One Cabot Street. I absolutely voted no on that. That was a two hundred thousand square foot building right on the canal. And we weren't in the position, we didn't have to be in the position where we had to shove it down our throats for ten thousand dollars. We said no in this body, and we ultimately conveyed it out for two hundred thousand dollars. That was a contract sale price for, for that. Now, is that pennies on, yes, it still is. But when you factor in the, the twenty times the actual value we got, because we forced Oped by saying, no, we're not gonna do it. So, so put that into context. We, yes, we heard from the quote-unquote experts, but this body may take, took the vote. And, and, and having a finger on the pulse and knowing what, what the city's financial picture looked like, we said no. And ultimately, they came back with a two hundred thousand dollar deal with an investor from New Hampshire who's got a thriving series of businesses in there. And so the value on that is well over one point one million dollars now. So look what we did. I mean, we had a proposal for ten thousand dollars, which was gonna be basically a nothing burner. And we waited, and now it's, now it's, it's a marijuana facility, and we got a building, a, a, sitting right on the Amtrak rails, that's, that's been a credit to the community. So when, when I think about this, I, I agree with award two counselor. And maybe that's gonna spark some, some harder negotiations for Oped, that we don't have to have these buildings come before us for five thousand dollars or two thousand dollars or, or pennies on a dollar. I, I think in this case, we probably have, I'm gonna vote for it. I think we, we should accept it. But that, the vote that the council is gonna take, it's, it's a valid vote, and it's a valid argument, because it says, it sends a message to Oped, just like we did with the Geriatric Authority, which you mentioned tonight. I'll go, I'll go again. We said to them, stop giving us non-paying, non-paying taxpayers for buildings. So that's what they sent to us, and we said no. Now we end up getting Bay State Medical that's gonna pay the commercial rate for a brand-new five-story building. You know, this, this dumb city council, you know, a bunch of big, big city councils, well, we're not that dumb. And I think we have, we have our finger on the pulse, and I think we put a lot of time and effort in consideration. That's gonna be a taxpayer. Same way with, with Mayor Vista at Providence Hospital, another one permit we've supported. Why? Because they're gonna pay the commercial rate. Those are two brand-new taxpayers. So the white elephant that was the Geriatric Authority, gone. And now we're gonna have a building that's gonna be valued at five million dollars for construction. So we'll see what, what it's assessed at. But, I mean, that's gonna be a pretty significant taxpayer. So, so while I, you know, I don't want to sound like I'm arguing all over the place here. I agree that the conversation should be had. It's a darn good vote, and it's a darn good argument. I think in this case, we're looking at private investment at the end of High Street that could use a lot of love. And so I'm gonna vote yes. But down the road, you know, we don't always have to say yes. Thank you.
Counselordane.
Yeah, a couple of points. One is on an interesting side note. The, the issue of East Hampton Savings Bank was brought up and how that went to five thousand, you know, well, one of the things in, in the interesting backstory of that was when the city sold the Old Dean School lot, which is current today, CVS. They allowed a clause to go on there that allowed CVS to preclude any retail development on any parcel adjacent to them. Why the city ever agreed to that is, that wildly devalued the property. So we, we actually had somebody that wanted to give us a quarter of a million dollars for that lot. We ended up having to take it for five grand for a bank. Now, I mean, we're glad and thankful. Thank you, East Hampton Savings Bank for being there. They've, they've, they've run a nice ship there. But it, you know, there is an interesting backstory, not city council, by the way, that put that on there. But Counsel McGivern raised the, the point I wanted to raise, which is, I'm supportive of this because I think this is the type of development that we need to do. These buildings in and of themselves have negative salvage value. Okay, quite frankly, I, I don't think from a, a dollars and cents of it, you've got to basically have full capitalization. They're probably would not get a traditional private loan from a bank for this type of thing. That's probably why they're bringing in private capital, just to have that level of flexibility to it. I think this is overall a good project, one we should embrace. But I do agree with what Counsel McGivern said, and we should specifically spell it out, that there's a two-year reverter clause here. That if for some reason, they don't do what they're supposed to do, and this project, the money falls through, whatever the story is, we have that two-year reversion clause so that we can put it back out to bid and find some other interested party that will move forward with it. Because the city has been burned in the past on some of these where, you know, a certain lot that today is a Dunkin' Donuts, that used to have an apartment block across from Mel's, was allowed to linger for eight years, went through four different reverter extensions. And finally, the person ended up turning the property back to the city. I won't name names. But ended up turning it back to the city, and then we had to end up ultimately selling it off to somebody. So we do have precedent for exercising those reverter clauses. And I think we might want to spell out in the motion, if the chair's amenable to it, that, you know, we pass this with the two-year reverter to the benefit of the city, just so that's all spelled out. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you. Mr. President, I think I lost my train of thought. It's nine fifty, I'm tired. What I want to say, so one, I, I completely agree with this project. Like, I know Katie and Carlos, I know the work that Paper City does, and I, and I think they'll do a great job with this property and what they're capable of. As far as the order I filed with Counselor Puello, that sort of has to do with this is, you know, making sure that the process for RFPs is transparent. And how do, how do our people get access to these properties as well? I mean, I think I'm on, on the other extreme, where I think some of us want more money for these properties. I'm more on the, these properties are falling down. How can we give it to those that don't have access to this type of capital, to these properties, to eventually make it something bigger, whether it be through collective bargaining, whatever it may be, to make sure that our, the Holdovers are also getting access to these properties. Like I said, you know, I'm, I'm ready for that conversation with Oped, and how do we make it more transparent and get more people into it. But this one in particular, we're voting yes for today.
Counsel Rivera.
So I just had a question on the, the reverter clause, right? So like, if two years go by and then they don't do as we say, then the property reverts back to us, and then we're responsible for possibly taking it down?
Yeah, well, we don't have to exercise. We could resell it, we could...
You, you have the option.
How many offers were put in before then, though?
You don't have to exercise it. You have a right to exercise it. If you do, then it's back to us. Then sell it or take it down.
All right. Just clarifying, because, I mean, I think that it was on the list to get knocked down, right? Because nobody actually put in an offer for it, and they actually came along. We're the only people that have put in an offer for it.
There were three bids.
There was a couple of other offers?
Three.
All right. All right, that's cool. I'm cool with it then. Then, I just want to make sure that, like, it doesn't go back, and then we gotta eventually knock it down, and then the money we put into it, I mean, the money, I mean, we end up spending more money than we should have.
So hold on. Counsel Tomlin, then Counsel McGivern, then Counsel Malanato.
I was about to put my two cents in right now. Not as eloquent speaking as Kevin or Mr. Bartley here, but anyhow, that is important, an investment in this community. And I understand where you're coming from, Counselor. Five thousand dollars. I mean, I've been on this board where a number of properties were given for one dollar, you know, one dollar, and they, you know, and, and some go a little bit more. But maybe that conversation is to be had. Maybe we can get a little bit more. Maybe we get ten or fifteen thousand, maybe we get twenty thousand. But they are taking a dilapidated property, putting something on there, putting a business, you know. And, and I think it was just maybe right across the street. Wasn't there a building that just fell apart there a year or two ago? Just came crumbling down? So whatever you can do to try to give some stability to our community, especially on High Street, I think is a good thing. And one more question, what'd you bowl the other night? Okay, all right.
Just, just one.
I had one spare, one spare.
Hold on. Counsel, Counsel McGivern.
I just wanted to know if it was ten pin or candle pin?
Probably ten pin.
All these arguments, all these points are correct, and they are good ones, but there's the rest of the story that we don't always hear, and we don't, we're not always aware of. One Cabot Street, you know, Counsel Bartley was exactly right. And there was a lot more going on in One Cabot Street than, than I'd like to get into this evening. But the negotiations eventually went to someone with deeper pockets, who eventually brought in some of the marijuana industry itself. East Hampton Savings Bank, that lot was the original annex to the original high school that became Hampshire College School Pharmacy at one time, or something like that. It had a swimming pool on, in the bottom of it that no one knew about. When they tore down the building, they didn't cart away the material, they, they just let it fall into the swimming pool. The excavation that East Hampton Savings Bank had to do was very costly. East Hampton, East Hampton Savings Bank is not here as a savings bank. They're here as a commercial lender. The biggest plus about what they wanted to do was get into the commercial lending market, be competitive, which means other commercial lenders had to be aware of, there's a new kid in town trying to compete with their rates and maybe being a little bit competitive, and getting commercial rates for lending to come down. I, I, the reverter clause is worth, we rarely have to execute it. The Oped office, for the most part, and sometimes Community Blockhead Office, you know, they, they look out for this reverter clause and make sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. It, it makes sense. What I'm fearful of, and, and, and I realize it's always nice to get a little bit more for a property, but there's the, the flip side, too. The Essex House, we didn't get anything for the Essex House. We, we paid for the cleanup when it fell into High Street. The corner of Franklin and Maple Street, a beautiful building that was boarded up back when Bill Hamilton was mayor. You know, it, it was gorgeous on the inside, a good roof. Fifteen years later, the roof went. Twenty-two years later, F fell into Maple Street, into the street itself. An historic building, the old bud. The old bud was, was, you know, speakeasy, you know, it goes back to, you know, the incredible architecture of that building. When, when the owner, you know, stopped paying taxes, the city eventually required it. He had already let that building go where it needed a roof. When the city acquires property, we, we don't have the revenue or resources to put roofs on buildings. The first, when a roof goes, it's only a matter of time when the building is gonna go the inside out and fall into the ground. And that's why sometimes we have to take the offer in front of us, if it's a good proposal. And in this case, the investment of three hundred thousand dollars into a building that was gonna be condemned, and, and investment into a piece of property that's gonna complement the rest of this, this area downtown, makes a lot of sense. And that's why I say it's a win for everybody.
Counselor Malanato Velez.
Thank you. I was just gonna talk about the reverter clause when Counsel Rivera was talking. My understanding with Oped, there's, like, there's benchmarks. So like, by six months, if something's not getting done, like, there's conversation in a year. So it's not like two years, all of a sudden, you're like, hey, by the way, you haven't done anything. Like, they keep going, like, every couple months. Hey, this is what, the way you need to get done. The other point I wanted to make, because Counsel Tomlin just said it, so actually, a constituent gave me an idea of, I know, we're not Italy, but the example was Italy, how they give out properties for a dollar. And the fact that Counsel Tomlin just said that we have done that in the past, it tells us that is something that we can do. So, you know, maybe like inventory, and maybe saying something that's already in progress, but inventory of our properties, and like, maybe there are some opportunities to sell some for a dollar to get more community members that don't have, again, the capital to gain it, but also the other ones where we can actually make some money for our city. So just wanted to make that point.
Counsel Puelo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Counsel Rivera's question because, you know, he, he was talking about the other proposals, and there was other interests for the property. Just to clarify that, there was, there was more people that wanted to look into it. And before the, the property was taken over, this time, it was actually taken over from a previous RFP, from somebody's reverter clause then. So there's been continuous interest for our properties, and I think that puts the council in a really, really unique position to make sure that we pick and choose, quite frankly, what proposals we want and put whatever conditions on them we want, or ask for whatever price. I think that there's a big demand to move in. I think that there's a big demand to move in, particularly maybe in the Holyoke, maybe, you know, I'm not sure what other people think, but I think there's a demand for people to move in. And, you know, I had a house next to me, it sold for $290, the Bassetts, they're gone. Shout out to the Bassetts, now they're in Belchertown. They got, you know, they're doing pretty good, so I think there's an interest in people to come in, and I think that puts us in a really unique position, especially when we're looking at all these RFP, RFP properties. Thank you.
So Counselor Jordan had a motion that, where'd you?
My motion is that it be approved, just adding the two-year reverter provision, that's it.
So is there a second to that?
Second.
Other discussion?
Counselor McGivern.
I have no problem with a two-year reverter, but I don't believe it's our, it's our authority to do that, or the way this has got to be worded, needs to be careful. Thirty-B is, you know, it's the mayor that's negotiating the sale of the property, not the city council, and the negotiations have already taken place. We declare, we allow this property to be surplus as one vote, and our second vote is for when the mayor puts the, what he's or she has agreed to for the sale of the property itself. And I think we just got to be careful how we try to renegotiate something that, you know, may or may not be in our purview.
Counselor Bartley.
And Counselor Anderson Burgos, I apologize, I do not apologize for the jacket behind me, because, you know, back in 1965, there weren't...
Oh, my God. Joe, I still love you, and I forgive you.
Hold on, everyone, Counselor Bartley first.
It's my recollection, but I'm 98% positive that the reverter clause is already standard language in RFPs. So we don't need to amend that now. I don't want to speak to what Counselor McGivern says, I believe he's more right than wrong, but I can't say that for sure, but I am virtually certain that the reverter clause is already part of the process, and it'll be within the recorded instrument.
I think you're 100% right, I just think what Kevin or Jordan was saying is that he would like to make sure...
As a condition, yeah, and, I mean, you have, who knows? I leave nothing to chance. If they're gonna do it anyways, great, nothing to worry about, we're all on the same page. If somehow that turned into a, we're doing something other than that, then I want to hear about that. So I just think it's, you're correct, it has been standard course, hopefully it stays that way. So that would be, I think the motion speaks for itself. That's historically what we've always done.
All right, so the motion, which was seconded to, oh, Counselor Anderson Burgos, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, if there's any time to seek out legal advice, and I know we have lawyers on board, but, I mean, that's why we have Mike Visna as well, is to ask him if there is an issue if we put the stipulation, this two-year...
So motion would be to ask legal to weigh in on the two-year...
Yeah, just to make sure.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, or anyone from legal?
Thank you, Mr. President. The answer to the question is contained in the RFP. Every bidder was notified that there would be a two-year reverter deed that they would have to sign, as well as a reverter agreement that can be enforced, and within the deed itself, there would be a number of conditions that would outlive the reverter, would outlive any transfer of the land, that would run with the land, and require whatever conditions for that parcel's rehabilitation to have been met either by this owner or any subsequent owner. So those are already in place, it is two years on this one.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So you're fine?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just leave it there, but yeah, I think that's good, that's perfect, yep.
So here, motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the sale price of $5,004, 144 High Street. So clerk or caller, if you vote yes, you're voting for the sale.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Raffi Rumbalati?
Yes.
Puello?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Twelve Y's, one N.
What, your vote, you approve that one? Do you want to take up C and D as a package?
Yes, please.
Motion to spend rules, take up C and D as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
C is that DGNR invite in Sarah Greenleaf from Urban Forestry of DCR, so that's been complied with, and then D is to invite in Lynn Gray, the general manager of the Hoyok Mall, that's been complied with. Under discussion?
Thank you. Great conversations with both of these individuals, Lynn from the mall and Sarah from DCR, both gave us updates on their respective programs and responsibilities. The DCR program, thank you to Counselor Bartley for filing this order so that folks can be more aware of it, because DCR has a really awesome goal of planting, I believe, 3,000 trees, and Hoyok is one of those communities where trees can be planted for free, not just in residencies that are within the tree zone, but also businesses. So if, you know, I think we're hoping to hear from DCR more on this process, and then also Lynn from the Hoyok Mall gave some updates on how things are going, and despite the uncertainty of our economy, it sounds like the mall is doing well, all things considered, and they are taking a very unique approach to adapting to our economy, so I just want to thank both of them for coming in and answering any of our questions.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, and the great summary by the chair, I really appreciate the order for Lynn Gray, she was here last year, and to have her give an update was invaluable. So her presence in Hoyok, and she also runs the Hampshire Mall, so this lady's like busy, so it was great having her, and then we're also lucky that we have Lisa Ray, who's been marketing director at the mall forever, and she's just a staunch advocate for the city as well. Just relative to Sarah Greenleaf, you're gonna, you know, so, I'm so lucky to get to know people like that through this position, and Sarah is just one of these people, you're, you know, you can't help but get psyched to talk to. She just dives right in and takes charge, and I've seen her in action at Crozier Field, Metcalf, so talking to old guys like me, talking to kids at Metcalf, she's awesome. So as the chair mentioned, the goal is to, I think was to put in, you know, whatever the numbers are, but they're almost there, so they're like 2,100 in the ground, free trees, and she needs, you know, she's got a goal to get 300, 400 more in the ground in Hoyok, so we're gonna try to do what we can to help her, whether it's in a tree belt for the city of Hoyok, whether it's on a private parcel by a residential owner, by it's on a private parcel by a commercial or industrial owner, and even on state or municipal land. We certainly want to have a chance to reach out to her, she's gonna send the communication to us, hopefully on a semi-regular basis, to promote the program, hopefully that the mayor will post some stuff on the, with, the conservation director will post on the city website. So these, this is just, I mean, we've already had a Crozier in Mayor Field and Roosevelt Avenue, and all sorts of places, so I'm glad we're getting the word out on this, and it's just important for so many reasons, but great discussion, thank you.
Counsel Rivera.
I just wanted to add a quick piece, I would like to thank Counselor Bartley as well for inviting Sarah Greenleaf to the DGR, because I had been meaning to, after I won the election, I reached out to Nilka to adopt an island, specifically in the flat section of Hoyok, so I'm adopting an island on Main and Race where they meet, that huge island, and I've been planning on putting two trees there. So I ended up reaching out to Sarah Greenleaf, they're gonna put a conifer, which is a Christmas tree, what I call it, they call it conifer because it's the official word, and the plan is to partner with Kelly School and some of the residents in the flats to try to design, like decorate the Christmas tree in the wintertime, and then another tree that is gonna be, I think, a cherry blossom, if it's correct. But the one piece that has been kind of left out is that you have to water the trees yourself. So I have to contract with someone to come and water the tree weekly, to make sure that for the next two years, and you have to sign off on that, because if not, then you'd be held liable for the trees passing. So that's just the one important piece we have to kind of highlight, I'm gonna work through it and get through that process, because there is no water source nearby, other than the canal, and I don't think the canal water would be healthy for the trees. So, yeah, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you again.
You know what else, so these are complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
E, F, and G take up as a package?
Actually, E, F, G, H.
Well, these are leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I got excited, yes.
E, F, and G as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E is a petition for polls for Verizon, gas, electric, at North Hampton Street locating, and that gives the measurements, that's leave to withdraw without prejudice. F is that petition for a special permit at 170 Oak Street, leave to withdraw without prejudice. And G is also petition for Verizon, New England polls by 173 Easterly and Pleasant Street, that's leave to withdraw without prejudice. So standard on these?
Yes, I am making an attempt to clear out some of the jacket.
All right.
So it's receive, adopt, committee report, but under discussion?
Yep.
As the president knows, we've had a little running battle with our friends at Verizon for about 10 years, so they're saying they're gonna come back, and we'll just, we'll talk about a few things at that point when they come back, but we'll leave it there.
So motion is receive, adopt, the committee report to give leave to withdraw without prejudice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so now... H, I, J, K. So from H to Z, take up as a package?
Some hold.
All those in favor?
Abbreviated reading.
Now, I'll read them real quick. H is for the city council to declare old Rock Valley Road parcel surplus, leave to withdraw. I is for declaring two parcels formerly owned by the Geriatric Authority, leave to withdraw. J is, boy, neighbor to neighbor, its staff membership be invited into DGNR, leave to withdraw. K is that mass.com to DGNR, can you discuss traffic options for Dylan Ave, give leave to withdraw. Thirty-L is a house resolution HB 3320 and SB 1209, referred to as a row bill, invite them in, give leave to withdraw. Thirty-M, that the council convey 1170014 to Hoyok Housing Authority for $1, leave to withdraw. DGNR meeting superintendent, this is N, to develop a snow removal for sidewalks, leave to withdraw. O is that the director of community development and the office of planning development and housing meet with the DGR to discuss uses of HUD funds, leave to withdraw. P is that the paper street, that the paper street adjacent to 70 Muller in rear be declared surplus, leave to withdraw. Thirty-Q, that the two parcels on Mount, Mountain Road adjacent to conservation area be considered the same, that's leave to withdraw. R is a long one, that's the resolution for safe and acceptance community, that's leave to withdraw. T is that the mayor and the law department or anyone with knowledge of, this is Casey's contracts, given to the city council, leave to withdraw. S is skipped. No, S right here. S, that the DGNR report the documentation of 250,000 grants received, that's leave to withdraw. U is another, this is for the Geriatric Authority, enter into a 99-year lease with the housing authority, that's leave to withdraw. V, that at all times Hoyok is a welcoming community, that's leave to withdraw. W is a communication regarding Casey's contract from the Order of Treasure, that's leave to withdraw. Thirty-X is that the council receive a communication regarding Casey's contracts effect for those dates, leave to withdraw. Y is representative from ROKA come before the Public Service Committee, that's leave to withdraw. Z is that the city council consider declaring parcel at East Hampton Road surplus, that's leave to withdraw. So I miss any? No, I think I got them?
Nicely done.
With three guards to H to Z, the motion is to give leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're getting there. All right, so there's no charter and rules, there's no joint school and council, on to motions, orders, resolutions, then late files, which you already did one. Thirty-three is Counselor Jenny Rivera, that a handicap sign be placed at in front of 60 Northeast, that'd be to DGNR commission? I mean, ordinance, sorry. And handicap commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
From Counselor Rivera, order that the honorable counsel invite in Hoyok Cub to come present on what the Hoyok Cub is and how it will benefit the city, so that'd be...
Public safety.
Public safety.
And I would ask for everyone to be invited, so that way, if they do present, they can present there and everyone can actually see it, or if not, watch it on the video later on.
All right, so motion is receive, refer to public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Rivera, order that the legal, that legal review the Boston Cannabis Equity Program ordinance, so send this to ordinance. They have a copy to legal?
To legal.
Yeah.
Send to legal, but do you want to take it up?
I would say ordinance with a copy to legal, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
All right, so two ordinance with a copy to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor Bacon, Counselor Jordan, Counselor Puel, order that an update on heroin related overdoses be provided.
You missed thirty-six.
Oh, thirty-six, oh my God. Yeah, I did, thank you on that. Counselor Bacon, for thirty-six, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Puel, that the councils request the mayor to utilize marijuana stabilization money to help mitigate order, orders, orders, it's gonna be a long night. And so that would be for ordinance?
Receive, adopt, and send to the mayor, it's really under the mayor's purview.
All right, so motion is receive, adopt, send to the mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now thirty-seven, Counselor Bacon, Jordan, Puel, that the heroin updates from the police department, so that'd be to public safety? Receive, refer to police, copy to public safety?
Yeah, police with a copy to public safety.
To the police department, because they provide the data and a copy to public safety, please.
All right, all those, Counselor...
Question on that, so when they provide the data, does that go to the public safety, and then we provide, okay?
This way we can follow up with a meeting at your committee if we need to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-eight from Counselor Bacon, Jordan, Puel, that the legal opinion be issued to clarify allowing a use of marijuana impact fee money, for example, in order to facilitate, is there a problem in the community, can money be used for mitigation?
Motion to send it to ordinance?
Send to ordinance and refer to legal.
Right.
So two ordinance with a copy to legal?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-nine is from Counselor Bacon, order that the ordinance 26-33 be examined to update reflect the current responsibilities, so...
To ordinance?
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty is from Counselor Anderson Burgos, Counselor Jordan, Counselor Puel, order that the public safety committee invite in relevant departments to address concerns at the intersection of Beet Street, West Franklin, resident lost their life across the street, so this would be invite in the mayor, HPD, DPW, HGNE, and Mass DOT, and send it to public safety.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-one is from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Puel, that the DGR committee invite in George Mullery? Am I saying that right? All right, for the Volleyball Hall of Fame, so that'd be DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Forty-two from Counselor Bartley, that DPW patched the pothole at Woodland.
Yeah, just a friendly amendment to that Hoyok Street, onto that, that was a request I got today.
Alright, adding Hoyok Street to that.
Yeah, and, uh, so the, the motion is to just to resume.
Hold on, just on the motion to add Hoyok Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Correct, copy to the mayor, please.
Copy to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Forty-three is from counselor Bartley, counter well, that the mayor develop a schedule of project programming for the C, CC, DJ and R committee, uh, to be funded via marijuana stabilization funds.
Yeah, motions to, uh, uh, receive, refer to, uh, DGR for the chair to set up a meeting and then send a copy to the mayor as well as a city auditor.
Alright, so it's DG and R with a copy to the mayor and the city auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Forty-four is from counselor Bartley, givener, well, uh, Jenny Rivera, this is an order that the city council review and amend section five point four of the zoning ordinance to allow. Uh, dwelling units in the DR zone.
And the motion on this is to send to ordinance and, uh, this was, this was, uh, put forth by, uh, by Mr. Vega and he sent it to each of us and we're, we're co-filing it. And, uh, so I, I think we'll have a great discussion.
Alright, so this is to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Forty-five, uh, from counselor givener that the handicap semi place at two oh four Oak Street. So to DG and R, copy to the commission?
To ordinance?
Yeah, ordinance and the disability.
With a copy to disabilities.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Forty-six from counselor givener, uh, with the community support that the city post a s- snow parking restriction on its website. At least twelve hours before towing begins, uh, so this would be, you want to receive, adopt and send it to DPW?
Oh.
DPW, public safety?
With a copy to public safety for fallout?
Yes.
Okay. So receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Well, ca-
Yeah, go ahead, counselor.
Well, I, I think this is, if I may, I think this is a great order, but, but that's, that second sentence, in other words, the towing will not begin until the parking restriction has been up on the website for at least twelve hours. So it's almost sounding like that's an ordinance and I would want us to be a touch careful on that particular language, if I may.
Do, why don't we send to ordinance to have them look at it?
Why don't we send it to ordinance and, uh, yes, that, that would.
Forty-six to ordinance and then if anything, we can send it over to public safety.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-seven, uh, from counselor given her that the city paint new crosswalks and stop lines on the T-bar of Brown and Laurel. Uh, so that'd be receive, adopt and send it to DPW.
DPW, copy to the mayor.
And a copy to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-eight from counselor given her that the s- uh, city council adopt and create a method of enforcement of wage theft ordinance. Uh, for all contractors doing projects in the city. So that would be to ordinance?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Do we have another wage theft on here?
Was there?
Was there, was there second wage theft? I, maybe I'm, I thought, no, there wasn't. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Forty-eight to ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Forty-nine from counselor givener, uh, create a single lane, uh, out of two lanes, one-way road. And Ward four to include, and then there's a list of these.
Ordinance.
That would be ordinance as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Copy to city engineer.
So forty-nine to ordinance with a copy to the city engineer. Alright, fifty from counselor given her, uh, the city revisit, uh, traffic light projects and consider rotary, uh, rotaries in their place.
Public safety.
So that'd be public safety.
Public safety, copy to the city engineer.
Yeah, with a copy to the city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Fifty-one from counselor givener and Maldonado Velez, uh, order that the city council review and amend section eighty-six dash three-two-two of the ordinance. Uh, this is the electric vehicles.
Ordinance.
To ordinance.
And a copy to the gas and electric commission.
Ordinance and then copy to HG and E. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-two from counselor Jordan at the retirement board be requested to ensure that the, uh, city of Hoyok has no retirement investments in any way affiliated with Russia.
Retirement board?
So receive, adopt, send to.
The retirement board.
Board.
And a copy to Parac too.
And a copy to Parac with a communication back in thirty days?
Thirty days?
Thirty days?
Been able to do it, yeah. I did already to, speak to Mr. Delude. He, he feels that the wheels are in motion for this from Parac all the way down. Cause the governor is doing this throughout state government. So I wanted to make sure we were doing our part too, so.
Alright, so receive, adopt, send to, uh, the retirement board and Parac with a c- with a request for thirty, enter in thirty days.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-three from counselor Jordan that the city council please provide a co- that the city council please be provided a copy of all agreements related to the tax payments. From entities such as, uh, the new Bay State, uh, hospital and so on and so forth. So.
I was gonna say the mayor.
Refer to the auditor.
Oh, oh, the auditor?
Yeah.
Would be the best one.
Auditor.
Alright, ma- motion to receive, adopt, refer to the auditor.
Motion is receive, adopt, refer to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-four is from counselor Jordan, counselor vacant that the mayor be requested to provide the city council and CPA committee, a list of historic preservations related to repairs needed for city buildings such as city hall, West area, Harris and the annex. So receive.
Copy to, I'd like to receive, adopt, send it to the mayor and the DPW.
Alright, motion is receive, adopt, send to mayor, DPW.
I would like to be added to that one too as well.
Sure, be happy. Uh, please add counselor Rivera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm gonna add my name to that too, but just through the chair to our CPA doesn't need it. It's, cause I heard what you said earlier, counselor, and, um. I think it's very important what you said, uh, relative to your pleas for getting, I mean, look at these walls. Uh, they're, they're an embarrassment. I mean, look, look all around us. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's falling apart. I mean, most, most people that come here are blown away by this room. But you, you look up around you and you just go, what? So I mean, there's, there's gotta be a way to get a little more proactive, uh, uh, from, from the, uh. The landlord here at city hall to get some money for CPA to start doing some of this stuff.
Yeah, so CPA is not being used for the walls. The, I, I do believe it's the ARPER money Alicia Zoller has been working on and the mayor does have it. And I've dated me to do this as well as the window, s- s- the wood around the window, uh, the rugs have already been done through our work.
Yeah.
They are looking into.
That was your work, Todd.
And then, but also. They're looking into desks as well.
So they are. Let's just get them done.
Well, the stained glass is different. There, there's a long list of stuff that Alicia's worked on and that is being approved. The CPA money may not be requested because some of that money's being used to do this. Yeah, copy that.
I would just like to add, um, other than the stained glass windows, um, and with stereo hearst, uh, any other city projects? So like with city hall itself, I've, I've already asked the mayor, like, why haven't, I mean, obviously he wasn't here before, but in the future is like, try to apply for some of the stuff. Cause this is a beautiful building and it can be utilized for a lot of different other things, especially the upstairs banquet room. Um, it can actually add more value to the city and we can bring in revenue and renting into space. CPA is designed for that and for city annex and for some of the other buildings we have. Um, so yeah. I, I hope more department heads just come together and try to apply to CPA, cause that is the opportunity to try to fix the space.
Alright, so this is to receive, send to the mayor. Do you want to go into finance or anything?
Um, no, well, once we get the list, then we'll kinda take it from there.
Receive, adopt, send to the mayor and the CPA committee.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All opposed?
Aye.
Fifty-five is from counselor Jordan and well, that the mayor and park and rec, uh, department, please fund the Spanish festivals five thousand staging. So.
Please add my name to that.
Yeah, I, I'd like to receive, adopt, refer it to the mayor.
Sold. Motion is receive, adopt, refer it to the mayor to add to the budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-six is from counselor Malavalez that the city council committee take up and act on any order in their jacket. That are dated before February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules.
Can we refer to every committee? So every committee understands that this is an order in their committee to take up. Cause I'm not changing, we're not changing anything in the charter and rules technically. I'm just enforcing the rule that we've agreed to at the beginning of our term.
So motion is receive and adopt and you're on notice.
You have a copy to all chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Copy to all chair.
You're all on notice.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-seven, uh, that we add the city council rule, which requires unanimous vote to be continued, uh, past ten PM.
Charter and rules.
So we all have a vote on that right now?
Can I add my name to this?
Can we timestamp the, uh, when this was taken up? Besides, ten, ten, uh, what, ten twenty-eight at the time this order was taken up?
Rules at eight and took this one out?
I know. You won't get a unanimous vote, that's for sure, right? Charter and rules.
So that's the charter and rules. Fifty-seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-eight, uh, from counselor Malavalez, uh, counselor Vera, that order that we add a grant manager position to oversee and streamline.
Go to ordinance.
So that would go to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Fifty-nine is from counselor Malavales, order that we allow for overnight parking, uh, see, city parking lots for people to sleep in their cars. Uh, this would go to.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, to sub an ordinance for that.
I would think so, yeah.
All, all those in favor?
Can we add a copy to public safety?
Yep, you can add a po- yeah, with a copy to public safety.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty is from counselor Malavales and counselor Vera, that order that we work on expanding the community responder model, uh, that the Hoyok Police Department is already participating in, uh, so.
Public safety.
Public safety.
Public safety. Alright, so sixty to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-one.
Finance or?
Uh, this is from counselor Malavales, Anderson Burgos, givener, uh, Murphy Rambeletti, uh, Rivera.
Instead of D, DGR, I think.
I would.
DGR?
Yeah, DGR.
Yeah, so resolutions to support a fair share amendment. So that would be.
DGR.
DG and R.
DGR, okay.
Good idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-two, counselor Malavales order that the city council invite in a representative from the department of early education. Uh, to discuss home daycares and licensing.
Ordinance. We already have an ordinance on that.
So that'd be ordinance?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we did just get the legal opinion on that, by the way, just for counselors aware of that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-three is, uh, or that we create a canvas committee to strictly deal with marijuana, uh, marijuana special permits. That would be.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-four.
Finance.
Or that ordinance with, yeah, so this is, uh, financial transfer. This is the, um, equipment program grant. So to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Sixty-five, motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
This is just the injured on duty. It's a standard one. We've already seen it about a thousand times. So motion is to pass the second reading.
I would, I would only note that I don't see anything for the fire department here.
Yeah, this was just the police. There's no fire.
Just police.
So, must pass the second reading?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So.
Second.
Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for sixty-five and the transfer for injured on duty.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approve that one. Sixty-six, uh, from counselor Mercer Rambeletti and myself. I was missing from that.
Yeah, thank you.
Added myself.
Get your republic safety for a discussion, I think.
So to the city engineer to look in for a traffic light at one forty-one, uh, Bemis Road, motion be to send to the engineer and to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Sixty-seven from counselor Mercer Rambeletti that we invite in a US congressional, senatoral representatives to DG and R committee.
DG and R?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
That was, I, I don't know if it really matters, but that was an order that I put in. I think the clerk switched the names.
I'm happy to stay on it, but it.
Yeah.
Can add.
That's it.
Counselors.
I think it's a great, it's a great order.
You should took it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Almost like Tessa thought of it.
Yeah. Almost, but not quite.
Could have been her inspiration, you don't know.
Alright, so to DG and R. Uh, ch- 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 sixty-eight. Counselor well, Malavales, that OPEC be invited in to discuss the RFP process for city, uh, properties offering to the public for bid beginning. So this would be DG and R.
DG and R.
DG and R.
Well, you certainly want to send a copy to the purchasing department.
Purchasing.
Probably, probably a friendly amendment to add, uh, Ms. Paul Andrew to the order as well.
Yeah, so add the purcha- uh, with a copy to purchasing to come in as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixty-nine from counselor well, the OPEC and the legal, uh, in legal identity and the impact and possibility of adding the following two conditions to standard RFP process. So that would be the same thing to DG and R.
Yeah.
To then discuss that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Seventy, uh, that the DPW provided quote, uh, in a plan for, uh, speed bumps, humps and requiring light signage establishment, temporary traffic controls. Uh, for each ward, uh, so this would be.
Uh, finance is dealing with cannabis.
Yeah.
Stabilization money right now.
How about finance with a copy to DPW?
Well, just, uh, you know, I, I, cause we do have my order that I sent that was kinda similar to that. Why, why don't we just send it to DGR for right now? Cause finance is dealing with a lot and I have a very similar order.
Alright, so.
To this, so we can just have a good discussion. Do you mind?
Seventy-two.
Okay, thank you.
Send it to DG and R?
Yeah, um.
Oh.
Not gonna make a major issue out of it, but stabilization funds are supposed to be finance. I mean, just.
They are, Kevin.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not gonna talk about.
Having a general discussion right now.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not gonna talk about how to do the funding. It's more, more cost and analysis than send it to finance if they need it.
Cause we're doing a lot of work and the chairman, I think, will vouch for this, that, on that issue of what we're qualifying. I know a lot of people are doing a lot of good research on this and stuff, so, um.
Yeah, when they're done, they can.
It's not a big deal.
They can always refer it over to.
Very minor deal, but yeah, I just wanted to just point that out.
Alright, so to DG and R, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy-one from counselor well, vacant that the city invite in. L, you wanna help me out here?
Corazon?
Corazon. Hart and, uh, Hoyok Project Community Artist and Order of Creative Arts.
Can we amend the name from Carmen to Alonda? I already got an earful about it.
Yeah, I was gonna say. That's not her name.
Can we?
Then a copy to fire, please.
Can we send a copy to the cultural council too?
Alright, so copy to cultural council.
Yeah.
You're gonna receive and do what with it? You're gonna receive and do what with it?
Copy to fire department, please, 'cause it's their boxes.
But do you, what committee do you want it to go to?
Uh, what do we think, DG-R?
Public service.
Public service.
How about public service? Okay. Alright, so it's a public service with a copy of those already mentioned, all those in favor?
Get Thomas on the door.
I got a full jacket anyways, I'm trying to clean things out.
Few late files here. A is a communication from Hoyok Public Schools, this is from, uh, the receiver, um, this is an update on the middle school project, motion be receive, send it to finance.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C is a communication from John Kelly, this is regarding, uh, the Hoyok Planning Board and their January twenty-fifth meeting. Discussing those zone ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance.
Steve, send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Last one is from myself, uh, order that the DPW city engineer come before public safety to address the tree removal issues that just occurred today on Princeton, and offer up some solution to the amount of trees that removed, maybe following up with DCR and Sarah Greenleaf, so that would be receive, send to.
Public safety, cop, yeah.
Yeah, that's, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's, right, so that's a touchy subject, but as you, as you know, Brown Ave, other streets, Princeton are getting new sidewalks, so this was anticipated. Um, but Sarah is on, I emailed tonight, she, she, she's all over it, so, she, she wants to go, we just gotta make sure that there are tree pits installed. Right. On the sidewalks, so that's, I think, that's, that's an important question.
I, I think they're gonna try and do that, I think there's just conflicting information between everybody, so just get everyone on the same page, that's all. Same page, alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, that is it. So there is a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Second.
All opposed? We stand adjourned. Good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.